.........
......... You look like me, I'm angry. I'm angry back there.
Welcome to the council members. Welcome. Please stand next to the altar to be greeted. Thank you.
Fight the black people. Yo, all of them got it. Yo, my uncle, who be angry? Can't just be angry. Tell the folks to be angry. Get the fuck to be angry. They will get to be angry. I'll bet, they're gonna be angry. But that's right. Tell them to go. Tell them to go. Get angry. Yeah. Angry. Get angry. All of them, they be angry. They must be. They must be. Angry. Angry.
......... Alright, the man's been over. Are you good? We're getting on board now. And the user must find out to feel like you're not allowed in the meeting. The individual is required to enter the meeting. Now, please to see such as what the public or private leaders are doing. They are doing what they want. They are moving from the meeting to the private leaders. The official public said it has so long ago. Public or private meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuit. To give the public said it has a user in the procedure. Who are you now? Who said to that? Armsets for the public or private to be called during the private promise period. And the very thing, community society council leaders, performing, arguing, arguing. That respect for language is not permitted. The meaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior is speech to elected for others is not permitted. This wrong behavior, including to stop people as a part of private or private presentations, is not permitted. Banners, honors, or sign of the not permitted. Not that, not that. And shotguns are not permitted. Fairness, not taken by law, but being on a team, held by private or public sources, would be prohibited of self-defense search. Food and beverages, including in the tennis courts. And not permitted. Southside must be placed on sound balance to meet our needs. The individual is required to receive. All the comments, speakers, and witnesses are on camera. Small hall has devices, not a single one, a single. And then, also, for free, for the feeling of the view of the members of the meeting. The individual is required to see such as what the public or private leaders are doing. All that work. Nice. I hear when you got the house.
The actual members of the council now, so well. Please do not examine your husband. The user may try. Armsets for the public or private meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuit. To give the public said it has a user in the procedure. Who are you now? Who said to that? Armsets for the public or private to be called during the private promise period. And the very thing, community society council leaders, performing, arguing, arguing. That respect for language is not permitted. The meaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior is speech to elected for others is not permitted. This wrong behavior, including to stop people as a part of private or private presentations, is not permitted.
The official public said it has so long ago. Public or private meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuit. To give the public said it has a user in the procedure. Who are you now? Who said to that? Armsets for the public or private to be called during the private promise period. And the very thing, community society council leaders, performing, arguing, arguing. That respect for language is not permitted. The meaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior is speech to elected for others is not permitted. This wrong behavior, including to stop people as a part of private or private presentations, is not permitted. Banners, honors, or sign of the not permitted. Not that, not that. And shotguns are not permitted. Fairness, not taken by law, but being on a team, held by private or public sources, would be prohibited of self-defense search. Food and beverages, including in the tennis courts. And not permitted. Southside must be placed on sound balance to meet our needs. The individual is required to receive. Despite the disparity of the public or private. Small hall has devices, not a single one, a single. And the user must find out to feel like you're not allowed in the meeting. The individual is required to see such as what the public or private leaders are doing. All that work. All that.
Oh, you're mad angry. Tell them I'm angry. I'm angry back there. Father President, be angry. Give it, give it, give it all. Give it right. Oh, yeah, tell him. I'm angry. Oh, yeah. Send your man angry. Something's wrong with him. He's not angry. Yeah. I'm angry.
Yeah, sometimes.
We bad life. That's why we go there. That was my.
Oh.
Yes. So much. Great life. Come on. You don't have to ride. You don't have to. Yo, you know, fuck you know. Right. We don't know. Let me go crazy there, come on. Give it hard. That's all man, that's all hard. You don't have to like. You don't have to. You don't have to.
The official public said it has so long ago. Public or private meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuit. To give the public said it has a user in the procedure. Who are you now? Who said to that? Armsets for the public or private to be called during the private promise period. And the very thing, community society council leaders, performing, arguing, arguing. That respect for language is not permitted. The meaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior is speech to elected for others is not permitted. This wrong behavior, including to stop people as a part of private or private presentations, is not permitted. Banners, honors, or sign of the not permitted. Not that, not that. And shotguns are not permitted. Fairness, not taken by law, but being on a team, held by private or public sources, would be prohibited of self-defense search. Food and beverages, including in the tennis courts. And not permitted. Southside must be placed on sound balance to meet our needs. The individual is required to receive. The comments, speakers, and witnesses are for the disparity of the public or private. Small hall has devices, not a single one, a single. And the user must find out to feel like you're not allowed in the meeting. The individual is required to see such as what the public or private leaders are doing. All that work. All that.
Yeah, no. That'll be like, I just call the guy, get some.
The actual members of the council. Please do not walk into the boxes. The user may try.
Why? Why they give it all?
I'm really glad. I heard.
Angry. Angry. Did you know that all the secret shit of the children's contracts is a piece of kind of stolen black shit? All it's true. One thing is because she talk about. She had to come say that you are shit. On the contract, you can go back. Like unattractive. How you first unattractive? That's unattractive. You the president, I found it. And the fear.
Do you know if you want to talk to me? We'll have some popcorn.
And then, we have new white women down here. So we have. So they have a kid. It's from the name of this black woman. Oh, it's that man, we read. It's that black woman. Uh, hello. Two white women. Not white ones. Maybe the big hair white men. It's from the name of this woman. That one, white women want to vote. The white women want to vote. They want to vote. They want to vote.
Remember that, uh?
How many? How many? How many white women?
That's George. She's a legend here.
I'm out of change.
Hope it's in our beat without George's leg.
All the gay white men. All the gay white men. Where's the white women?
The council will come to order.
I'm white. It's all white woman. No, you got that.
The council will come to order. At a time, please take a look. Turn on.
The voting is not open. The voting is not open. Please mark yourself as a participant. Okay, so now, Paul knows that our in papers have not been voted. All their person Robinson?
Chair, the eyes have it. Madam Clerk, please mark the following alders participating remotely as present on the quorum call. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation, which will be delivered today by Pastor Aldman William Hall.
Bow our heads. Let's bow our heads. God, we first of all say thank you that goodness and mercy has followed us into this day. God, as we handle your business, may our hearts be right, may our minds be clear, and God may compassion and empathy be our motivation today. God, we pray for differences to be an opportunity to discover, and may hope rise in the presence of hate. So God, help us as we try to work together, continue to strengthen our mayor, continue to strengthen our city. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. May be seated. This is the portion of the meeting for public comments. The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes.
Mayor Johnson and members of the city council. My name is Carlos Caleros. I am a resident of Chicago.
Written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker this afternoon is Carlos Caleros.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor Johnson and members of the city council. My name is Carlos Caleros. I am a resident of Chicago. I'm with the Chicago Workers Collaborative. We are members of the Illinois Coalition for Immigrants and Refugee Rights. We focus on assisting currently migrating families with informing them about neighborhood resources, as well as providing workshops for them to inform them of the rights that workers have despite the immigration status. We've come across immigrants that have been victims of trafficking. We've come across, uh, single mothers, elderly people. We all want the same possibility and the same possibility of a better life. Now, while I'm here to encourage a yes vote on the appropriation for new arrivals today, it is time to start making the pivot to, uh, long-term solutions for Chicagoans. Chicago has long been a welcoming city, and we're committed to ensuring it remains that way. While we are facing challenging moment, it's nothing that Chicago hasn't faced before. As a city, I'm confident that you all, that, with you all, that we can work together to come up with an inclusive, long-term solution that benefits all Chicagoans and lay the groundwork for future residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Sanjay Kumar.
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Sanjay Kumar. I'm a leader with Asian Americans Advancing Justice Chicago, and I live in the forty-sixth ward. Um, I am calling on city council not only to approve the seventy million dollars for new arrivals, uh, but to cancel the ShotSpotter contract, which has wasted tens of millions of dollars on a piece of surveillance technology that doesn't work. As a reminder, ShotSpotter is a gunshot detection system that is easily fooled by loud noises from cars back firing to fireworks. Uh, CPD has showed up to more than forty thousand unfounded ShotSpotter-initiated deployments over, over twenty-one and a half months, which is about sixty-one dead-end deployments a day. Uh, and the state's attorney office reported that ShotSpotter-related arrests lead to convictions only about one percent of the time. This is a massive waste of city resources and for a piece of technology that studies have shown has absolutely zero effect on preventing violence in the city. Rather than wasting money on this useless piece of surveillance technology, we are urging city council to invest in our communities, in schools, and mental health clinics to address the cost of living crisis where food prices, rent, and childcare costs continue to rise and thousands of our neighbors sleep on the streets. Um, we are urging you to vote against the order that calls for alders to be able to choose whether to remove the sound-thinking ShotSpotter technology on a word-by-word basis, and calls for any decisions related to violence prevention funding to be brought to the Public Safety Committee and full city council for decisions. We reject, we reject the intention and outcomes of this order, and we support Mayor Brandon Johnson's decision to cancel the contract with ShotSpotter citywide. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Kiara Cortez-Larios.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Kiara Cortez-Larios, and I'm here from a nonprofit named organization in Casa Michoacan. I'm here to advocate on behalf of all those asylum seekers who are looking to stay in Chicago. I am the first generation Latina. My parents came to this country thirty-three years ago. Um, as well, my parents and, uh, my whole family, including grandparents, including, um, uh, uncles, aunts, and, um, as well cousins. As a child and immigrant, I understand that my parents came to this country for a better living condition and for a bright future for us and their children. They came, they have not only given us a bright future, but with Casa Michoacan, we have been able to help our community settle in. I have seen the firsthand the dedication and the struggle this recent migrants experienced coming in the country seeking for the, for that same opportunity. They have not only given us a bright future, but, I'm sorry. They are all human and deserve the right to look for a better future, for not only recent migrants, but for those who have been here for decades. This money is crucial to keep migrants in a better condition. There are preventable diseases that children are dying from. These people are treating, treated like livestock with little accessibility to care. Investing in immigration, not only our duty as a sanctuary city, but a right humans looking out for each other. We are working for a better life and citizenship status should not be a barrier, especially in our country that has no direct pathway to citizenship. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sarah Tomas Lima.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Tomas Lemna. I'm a community organizer with Asian Americans Advancing Justice, which is a member organization of the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights, and I live in the fifth ward. Today, I am calling on the city council to approve seventy million dollars in funding to support new arrivals until the end of the year. Advancing Justice Chicago organizes for immigrant justice through monthly mutual aid mobilizations, through being part of coalitions that advocate for long-term solutions, such as the Bring Chicago Home campaign and the Stop ShotSpotter Coalition, and have long advocated for solutions like treatment, not trauma. This moment where we anticipate welcoming more new arrivals to the city of Chicago is clearly dividing our city, and this is exactly what Governor Greg Abbott has intended. He intended to catch our communities unprepared. And while many individuals, faith leaders, and community organizations have stepped up to support our new neighbors, this moment has also exposed some of the deficiencies in our social services, in our housing systems, and our, in our family support that have existed for decades in Chicago. This is evidence of a broken system that we must reimagine together. It's the system that has maintained generational disinvestments in communities of color in Chicago for far too long. And this systemic racism is what has prevented our city, one of the richest cities in the world, from paying more into the public safety net system. But today, you have the opportunity to right those wrongs by voting to support seventy million dollars to fund supportive services for new arrivals. And in addition, you have the opportunities to support long-term solutions to fund affordable housing and economic development for all Chicagoans by voting to borrow one point two-five million dollars over the next five years to make economic security a reality for more of our neighbors. I also urge you today to vote against the order that calls for alders to be able to choose whether to remove ShotSpotter technology on a word-by-word basis, and also calls for violence prevention funding decisions to be brought to the Public Safety Committee and the full city council. We reject the intention and outcomes of this order and support Mayor Brandon Johnson's decision to cancel the contract with ShotSpotter citywide. Chicago will remain a welcoming city while we work together to pass funding and to provide supportive services for everyone in this city. We can work together for inclusive, long-term solutions that benefit all Chicagoans and also lay the groundwork for future residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Eduardo Fuentes.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor. My name is Eduardo Fuentes. I am the director for New Life Centers, and it has been an honor and a privilege being able to work with our new arrivals. At New Life Centers, we've been able to help resettle over four thousand families, including sixteen thousand individuals. We care for over three hundred people in shelters currently. We have distributed over two hundred and fifty items across the shelter network. We provided fresh food to over six thousand neighbors per month. When I speak of migrants, let us not reduce them to mere statistics and headlines. They are fathers, mothers, sons, and daughters, just like us. They are, they embark on a dangerous journey, leaving behind everything they know in search of safety, opportunity, and a better life. How can we, in good health and consciousness, look a blind eye to that? Think of the families torn apart, the children separated from their parents, the individuals fleeing violence and persecution. These are our fellow human beings, and they are counting on us to show them compassion and solidarity. In Matthew twenty-five, verse thirty-five to forty, Jesus reminds us of our duty to care for the most vulnerable among us. For I was hungry, and you gave me something to eat. I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink. I was a stranger to you, and you gave me something to get to know you. Truly, I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me. These words resonate deeply within me. I am sure they do with many of you. They call us to action to extend a hand in kindness and hospitality to those in need, regardless of their background or their circumstances. And let us not forget the countless biblical injunctions to care for a stranger and a foreigner amongst us. Leviticus nineteen thirty-four implores us, "The foreigner reciting among you must be treated as your native-born. Love them as yourself, for you were foreigners in Egypt, and I am the Lord your God." My friends, we have the moral obligation to care for, to care for migrants, immigrants in our communities. It is not just a matter of policy or politics. It is a matter of compassion and humanity. Let us rise to the occasion. Let us stand in solidarity with our migrant brothers and sisters, and let us ensure that they are given the dignity, respect, and support that they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Yolanda Penna. Our next speaker is Yolanda Peña.
Good afternoon, Mayor Johnson, members of the council. My name is Yolanda Peña, and I reside in the North Austin community. We have a facility in Austin community, as well as we have a facility in the Hermosa community, predominantly where there's migrants. And although I am the co-founder of Life Impactors Foundation and members of the Unity Initiative with Pastor John Zayas and Grace and Peace Church, and although our organization focuses on reentry, we felt the need to pivot at the moment. And we've been working to support new arrivals for over two years now. This moment is clearly dividing Chicagoans, which is just as Governor Abbott in Texas has intended. He also intended on catching our communities unprepared. And while many individuals, faith leaders, and community organizations have stepped up to support our new neighbors, this moment has exposed some of the deficiencies in social services, housing, and family support that have existed for decades in Chicago. And while I am here to encourage a yes vote on the appropriation for new arrivals today, it is time to start making the pivot to long-term solutions that help Chicagoans, long-term support for unhoused residents. I can speak. In my experience, we've had over six hundred individuals stay at our facility. And I'm proud to say that we've been able to establish all, for the exception of seven individuals. Sometimes we understand that we can't help all, but I'm proud to say that we've been able to help everyone else. Chicago has long been a welcoming city, and we're committed to ensuring it remains that way. And while we are facing a challenging moment, it is nothing that Chicago hasn't faced before. And as a city, I'm confident that we can work together to come up with inclusive, long-term solutions that benefit all Chicagoans and lay the groundwork for future residents as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Swathi Staley.
Good afternoon, Mayor Johnson, city council, members of city government. Thank you for allowing my comments today on this important matter. My name is Swathi Staley. I'm the chief community investment officer and general counsel for the YMCA of Metropolitan Chicago. I am also the daughter of immigrants who arrived in Chicago and succeeded in contributing deeply to the fabric of this city and providing a life of opportunity for me and my sister. I'm here to urge city council to pass the funding request to continue supporting the migrant crisis. The reality of the situation is that the influx of new Americans and asylum seekers to Chicago is happening in real time. We have thousands of new arrivals in Chicago who are in need of our support and in need of community. The YMCA has stepped up as a Chicago institution to support the sheltering of adults and families and the education and enrichment of youth arriving in our city. We at the Y know that this is not the sole issue facing the city at this time, but it is an urgent, immediate humanitarian crisis of historic proportions that we cannot turn our back on. We are known as the city of big shoulders. We are known as a city that figures out solutions to big problems. Today, we face an immediate and acute crisis with the current new arrival situation and chronic crises of the lack of access and support for long-term undocumented residents and African-Americans who continue to be the most economically disenfranchised in our city. We do not need to pick groups against each other. We have the capacity to solve these crises for everyone. When it comes to ingenuity, we need to remember who we are. We need to call upon the defiant, yet welcoming spirit that we are known for to do the impossible to address these crises. As Muhammad Ali once said, "Impossible is nothing but a word thrown around by small men who find it easier to live in the world as it is than to explore the power that they have to change it." History will remember this moment and how we rose to the occasion to support all of our neighbors. We are a city built to do great things. We must extend funding to address the immediate, urgent, and historic issue facing the city today. I ask that the city council approve the funding for the continued support of this humanitarian crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker this afternoon is Melvin Bailey.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council, for having me again. You know, my fight is always about this violence going on in this community. Now, we talk about migrants, but what about them kids with them guns in their hand, them kids running them cars downtown? Let's talk about that. Let's talk about creating opportunity. And we talk about, thank you, Mayor, for trying to talk about housing. You know, if you give me these vacant lots, I can build quicker, and I can get some of these kids off the street. And let's talk about the project that's going on right across the street, right across the street. All of us should walk over there and shut that down. I don't care who money it is. I don't care if Google own it. I don't care who own it. It should be some black kids in there working. Somebody should be in there working where they can stop thinking about waking up in the morning saying, "I'm gonna commit a crime today." Matter of fact, I'm gonna wait till tonight. I'm a steel mill car. I'm a hurt innocent baby. I'm a rat. And you know what the young kids tell me when I talk to them? Man, what happened if you run over a person? Oh, well, they shouldn't have been in the way. That's the mindset they got. So what I want to do, let's talk about the workforce ordinance that's been on the books forever. It's the workforce ordinance, it's a residence ordinance, Chicago Municipal Code two-nine-two-thirty. All you lawyers in here, look that up. And you'll see the workforce hours, I don't care what construction site you own, should be going to residents in the community, should be going to residents in this neighborhood so we can stop some of this violence. Oh, we falling asleep. We been logged asleep now. I mean, I don't hear nobody saying, man, the only time we come out is when a baby get killed, somebody get hurt. We need to come out before that. And then let's talk about these construction companies. Let's talk about the black folks. And I told them this, every time they want me to help them get a contract, they mail me, help me get the contract. But now, they get the contract, I can't find them, can't see them, and they can't hire nobody because they hide behind the union. Oh, the union won't let me hire them. The union won't let me hire. Come on, you ain't say that when you was in my office talking about the job, the contract, these big contracts you get. You ain't say that then. So now I go back to you to ask you to hire somebody, now you don't can't hire nobody. And I want to talk about, we got to do something with this O'Hare Airport with Jamie Reed. I told Jamie, listen, we got some contracts out there doing installation. I said, my company can do installation. We could hire some folks. Oh, Melvin, call me, call me. Jamie, don't even pick up the phone no more. See, this is what I'm talking about. Stop looking high, stop sitting high and looking low on our community. Stop it. Man, all this violence going on in our neighborhood, man, you all see these kids, and guess what? We go talk to them. I don't care where they at, south and west side, up north, we'll talk to them. And let them know, man, we fighting for you, but they say, big bro, if you ain't got no job for me, man, I got a pistol and some dope, and I'm gone. That's the mindset they have, a pistol, and I got a gun and some dope, and I'm finna get me some money. Come on, man, we gotta do better.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Mack McLaurin.
Good day, everyone. This is probably one of the hardest junctures in human history, how we gonna get past what we look like, because we all people. I think in the end of Matthew twelve, thirty, thirty-one, the only unforgivable sin is blaspheming the Holy Ghost. So Jesus, Allah, wherever you want to go. But let's get back to charity begins at home, Chicago. So to bring Chicago home, we have to institute charity at home. Now, in human history, we had a lot of turmoil based on colorism, faceism, this Castillo system of putting people down based on the color of their skin. But people, like peoples in rocks and animals, come in all colors and shades. There were people here already. I'm a newcomer in a sense because I represent the fifty-first ward here. Anybody here, anybody sitting here that represent the fifty-first ward? Do you know what it's like to be hungry? For real? Because y'all sitting there, you looking good. Some people say I look good, so you don't see my pain and my struggle. I worked almost twenty years at Morel Elementary, Donald L. Morel Elementary, which was purported and named after a judge who supported immigrants. Our fine city is named recently, Dussabu Drive, Jean Baptiste Dussabu, an immigrant, a black immigrant, who came here, traveled the world, met an Indian woman here, they got married, and he had his family, and tried to make a way. I speak multiple languages, not as well, but I support this one thing about human nature. We all eat beans and rice, and we predominantly want our families to grow and be healthy. So how do we share resources to do that? You want to end violence? Well, can we start with clean water, clean air, Monsanto? You owe the people of Chicago seven hundred billion, and then we don't have to sit here begging for a golden ticket to get in here and see when and can we speak. Utilities should be free. It's breaking the backs of people, and more black people will come down here to tell you how they feel, but they have to work two shifts, sixteen hours, to raise those kids that never get to see their parents because they working for pennies. So the black people here that are disenfranchised, if you ever had your application that you filled out when you had to get all those papers, prove who you are, that when you were born here, your birth certificate, social security, all that stuff, and then it still gets lost, and they never get your paperwork, I understand and I hear you. But I still know what it's like to be in a situation where you knew, I got hit by a car, serving the people in my community in a city of Chicago, who gonna keep me safe? I can't get medical help for this brain injury because I'm black. I can't get quality medical care. Where you get that at? You gotta wait months and 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 wait on the mistakes. There's no time to wait, you all. If you are a true American, this racism is gonna tear up the infrastructure of our entire country. So you can take your paper money because it's not real.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. However, your time has expired. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much. Our next speaker-
Just a second, Mr. Clerk. Just a second. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Our next speaker is Reverend C.J. Hawking.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon to the staff of the alders and to the alders as well. I'm Reverend C.J. Hawking. I'm the executive director of Arise Chicago, and I am also a United Methodist pastor. So as I rise today, I want to give thanks for the life of Reverend Slim Coleman, who died just a few days ago. Global injustice and climate catastrophe has brought migrants all over Europe during the past two decades at accelerated rates. The surge of migrants coming into the U.S. are due in large measure to economic practices that have been exploited and initiated and perpetrated by the U.S. government. Like Europe, the number of migrants coming into the U.S. will continue to grow. They are at our doorstep. They are in our doors. Hospitality costs money. Civilization costs money. According to the World Economic Forum, cities with higher shares of migrants are often voted as the most desirable places to live. As their local economies grow and improve and they become more vibrant and dynamic, Chicagoland has a great opportunity for growth. After the eighteen seventy-one fire, a hundred thousand people in Chicago were homeless. Our city population at the time was only three hundred thousand, so a third of Chicago was homeless. The city was in ashes. Initially, smoke and despair permeated the air, but then faith communities and neighbors leaned in. The government pitched in, and optimism for a new future grew. No one had a car. No one had a cell phone or social media. But our ancestors rose to the vision of what Chicago could be, and they set about it, and they built it. Currently, southern governors are executing hate-filled politics by moving migrants around like chess pieces in order to gain a wrong-sided political advantage. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much. For resolutions, we don't have any today. So next up, then communications. Excuse me, the chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please count me towards quorum.
Mr. Clerk, would you please add Alderman David Moore to the quorum roll call? Chair recognizes Alderman Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to be reflected as present for quorum.
Mr. Clerk, could you please add Alderman Mosley to the quorum roll call? The chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Can I please be added to the roll call as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please add Alderman Lawson to the quorum roll call? Are there any other alders that wish to be added to the roll? The chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
Mr. President, please add me to quorum as I have-
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, please add Alderwoman Coleman to the quorum roll call. All right, very well. Communications, Mr. Clerk.
City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby informs the city council that the report of the Committee on Finance and the Associated Ordinance Regarding the Issuance of General Obligation and/or Sales Tax Securitization Corporation Bonds for the Economic Development and Affordable Housing Programs, which was deferred in order to publish at the city council meeting of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, was published in pamphlet form on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. City Clerk Valencia also informs the city council that the report of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and the Associated Substitute Ordinance Regarding the Supplemental Appropriation and Amendment of the Year Twenty Twenty Four Annual Appropriation Ordinance within the Fund nine-twenty-five, which was deferred in order to publish at the city council meeting of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, was published in pamphlet form on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. City Clerk Valencia also informs the city council that the report of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and the Associated Ordinance Regarding the Supplemental Appropriation and Amendment of the Year Twenty Twenty Four Annual Appropriation Ordinance within the Fund zero-one-hundred, which was deferred in order to publish at the city council meeting of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, was published in pamphlet form on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from city officers.
Very well. Thank you very much. Next up, we have committed reports. We only have, well, we have one for economic capital and technology development. Chair recognizes Chairman Viegas.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the city council. Reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held the meeting on Tuesday, February thirteenth, the committee held the meeting and recommends the passage of the following item. Item one on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a Class L tax incentive for the property located at four sixty-five West Sirmack Road in the eleventh ward, introduced by Mayor Johnson during the January twenty-four- introduced by Mayor Johnson during the January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four City Council Meeting. I move for passing this item by this first available roll call. No, I'm sorry. Uh, roll call vote, please.
We can do a, uh, would you, are you requesting a voice vote?
Yes. Oh, yeah, there we go. Yes, we'll request a voice vote.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor for the passage of this item by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Repeat, the chair, the ayes have it. Alderman Mitchell for the, uh, motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, move to reconsider the vote?
There's a motion on the floor to reconsider this vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. This motion fails. Does that conclude your report?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the agreed-upon calendar, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Mr. President, there are no resolutions submitted to Clerk Anna M. Valencia for the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four agreed calendar.
Very well. Thank you very much. Uh, for any new business, Mr. Clerk, beginning with wards, beginning with the first ward.
Zoning amendments refer to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alien access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Lopez has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Title III by adding a new chapter, three dash seventy-six, entitled Automated Self-Checkout Kiosk Task, imposing policies and penalties for retailer-paid tax on use of self-checkout kiosk devices, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Spazado has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty-eight zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Irving Park Road, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of all the medic introductions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Uh, now for unfinished business. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I am aware of three pieces of unfinished business. The first piece of unfinished business was filed by Alderman Irvin and calls for a vote on Substitute Ordinance, Ordinance Two Zero Two Four Zero 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 Eight Three Four Five, which was deferred and published on April seventeen, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much, Alderman Mitchell. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Mr. President, I filed a Rule Forty-One Notice with the clerk of my intent to call for a vote on Substitute Ordinance Zero Twenty Twenty Four Zero 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 Eight Three Four Five, a substitute ordinance concerning the annual appropriation ordinance year twenty twenty-four amendment within Fund Nine Two Five for the Department of Public Health. Following any debate, observe the right to close.
Very well. Alderman Irvin has asked for the right to be the final speaker on this item. Are there any Alders that wish to speak to this item? Seeing no hands, the chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Uh, move for adoption via vo- voice vote.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor for a roll call. Uh, Madam Clerk? Uh, members, please use e-vote application and record your vote at this time. Yes, the chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
I, you know, we don't have a thorough agenda on the order and what's being called, uh, what language is being called. We're throwing out a bunch of numbers without knowing what the language is. And I think right now there's a little bit of confusion on what is coming before us. So if we could articulate through the chair to the chairman, which item are we voting for? Is it the bond issue? Is it the, the, uh, you know, the seventy million? Which one is it?
Thank you very much, Alderman Bill. Mr. Chair, do you care to offer more clarification besides the number that you've offered?
This is the, uh, nine two five amendment.
For, for public, for the public health? The, the voting is still open. If, if, if individuals are believing that this is the seventy million dollar appropriation, seventy, I'm sorry, this is not that. Okay, the, uh, uh, could, let me, the chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
Mr. Chairman, all I'm asking for, and my colleagues, I'm hearing the little voices behind me, we would like to know exactly what it is that we're voting on and just not give us numbers.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin. So this grant that we are receiving, would you please just, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the point, the nine two five, in this case, has additional funding for the Department of Housing, the Department of Public Health, the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities, the Department of Family and Support Services, the Department of Police and the Department of Water.
Thank you for that-
This is the substitute ordinance that passed out of committee on, uh, Monday.
Thank you for that clarity, Mr. Chair. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez for- You don't need anything else? All right, thank you.
I was just going to clarify.
All right, it's been clarified? Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, the voting is still open.
Okay, I will now call on those who have not yet used their device to vote. Alderperson Robinson? Alderwoman Ramirez? Alder- Alderwoman Ramirez is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Sigcho Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sigcho Lopez is a yes. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez? Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez? Alderman Napolitano? Alderman Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Gardner? Alderman Gardner is a yes. Alderwoman Clay?
Yes.
Alderwoman Clay is a yes. Alderwoman Silverstein?
Yes.
Alderwoman Silverstein is a yes. Um, Alderperson Robinson? Okay. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez? Okay. Voting is now closed.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. There are forty-eight yays, zero nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. This motion fails. Alderman Mitchell on the second piece.
The second piece of unfinished business was filed by Alderman Irvin and calls for a vote on Ordinance Two Zero Two Four Zero 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 Eight Eight Four Two, which was deferred and published on April seventeen, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Mr. President, I filed Rule Forty-One Notice with the clerk of my intent to call for a vote on Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four Zero 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 Eight Eight Four Two, an ordinance amending the Twenty Twenty Four Appropriation Ordinance. This is the seventy million. You're welcome. Following any debate, I reserve the right to close.
Thank you very much. Alderman Irvin has asked for the right to close. The chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chairman Irvin. That was extremely easy. Um, Mr. President, I rise in total opposition of appropriating seventy million dollars at this particular time. I said back in November, and I think I repeated myself three times, that we did not have a balanced budget. We didn't have a balanced budget. We did not have a balanced budget. And here we are. I said that we will be, be back here in April because we will be out of money. We can rewind the tape. I said we will be out of money in April. Well, here we are. Here we are in April, looking to appropriate another seventy million dollars. However, right after the budget was passed in November, we found miraculously ninety-five million dollars. Just popped out of nowhere. Ninety-five million dollars right after we voted for the budget. Now, you cannot tell me we did not know we had seventy, I mean ninety-five million dollars after we voted on that budget. You cannot tell me, as smart as our budget director is, that we didn't know that we were going to come back in December and sweep, without this council's approval, ninety-five million dollars again for residents who are not paying taxes here in the city of Chicago. So, now, we're asking to match the state and the, uh, and the county to get us more money for the rest of the year, which still is not going to be enough money to get us through the rest of the year. Why? Because we're anticipating that we're going to have about five thousand people a week coming, starting in just a few days. So that means we're going to need more money for this problem. Meanwhile, our seniors are still suffering. And let me just digress. I appreciate the governor and our county board president for helping us out. I do. But can anybody tell me how many migrants we got outside the city of Chicago? In the county or in the state? Can anybody answer that question? The question is, we don't have any. They're all in the city of Chicago because the rest of the county mayor said, thanks but no thanks. The rest of the state said, thanks but no thanks. But here in the city of Chicago, we say, come on to Chicago. We got healthcare for you. We got childcare for you. We got all kind of housing. We got education for you. We got housing vouchers for you. We got it all. That's why everybody's coming to Chicago. But if you cut off the funding spigot, they won't come. They won't come. But as long as we continue to fund this problem, they're going to continue to come to Chicago. Now, from what I understand, there's absolutely no crime in Venezuela right now. Why? Because they sent all their problems to us. They sent them all to us to deal with. So now Venezuela is the place to be. Because there's no crime. There's no problems. Just keep coming to Chicago. So, here we are, targeted to spend over a billion dollars this year alone, when you add up the city, the state, the county, and what we get from the federal government. A billion dollars is what we're targeted to spend. Give the South and the West Side a billion dollars and see what happens to crime here in the city of Chicago. Give us those kind of resources and watch crime go down because we can create jobs and opportunity. We can create a better education system. We can do things necessary to make our communities a better place to live and play. But as long as we keep doing the same old thing, and what's the same old thing? The same old thing is voting yes. As long as we continue to vote yes, nothing is going to change, y'all. Nothing is going to change. When you vote no and have the courage to vote no, thank you, courage, to vote no, things change and we go back to the drawing board to make things better for our communities. Now, I'm going to just say, there's twenty black Aldermen here in the city of Chicago. We only need twenty-six to pass anything, right? There's no reason why we cannot leverage those twenty votes to make our communities a better place. We use those twenty votes to make sure that we get our fair share of everything in this city. It takes courage. But if we continue to just vote yes, then we're going to continue to get the least of these resources in this city. So I'm just asking to have a little courage. And I guarantee you, if you show a little courage and vote no, we go back to the drawing board, make this thing a little better, our communities get better. The South and West Side get better. That's all I'm saying. But a billion dollars. Now, we're facing a billion-dollar deficit coming up this fall. That's just our operating budget. That's not including migrant money, y'all. A, over a billion-dollar deficit this year and next year. We got to come up with over two billion dollars, probably closer to two point five, maybe two point six, give or take. And that's not including migrant money. So what are we going to do? We're going to go to my taxpayers that I can't help and tell them to give me more to help people who ain't even paying into the system. They're not even paying into the system. But we telling my seniors, you can't have resources. We can't give you a roof. We can't give you a hot water heater. We can't give you a porch. We can't give you a furnace because we don't have the resources in these departments. But god darn it, we can find seventy million dollars to keep burning up out the back. That's all we're doing is burning money, y'all. Give my, give me that, that money in my community. And I guarantee you, we'll turn some things around. We can turn things around in this city if we just keep fighting for what's right and stop doing the same old thing. Because that's what we're doing, the same old thing. So, let's talk about the elephant in the room. We're not even talking about what CPS is going to ask for. That's going to hurt our taxpayers. So we going to hit them with taxes this year? Then we going to hit them with a huge tax on CPS? The residents of the city of Chicago are going to bear that brunt. Where's all this money coming from? So, we have a reassessment that's coming? That's going to raise people's taxes here in this city? So what I'm describing, y'all, is the elephant in the room. That the taxpayers of the city of Chicago about to get hit and they about to get hit hard. And they going to get hit from all angles. Now, let's also talk about the casino deal that's about to blow up that's supposed to go towards pensions because they're undercapitalized. That, we should, we have a huge shortfall from the money that the casino is supposed to bring us. And we don't even know if the ma- the main casino is even going to get approved because they're about to go under. So where's that money going to come from? We're not addressing the crime in this city? We're not hiring more police? Our residents are being put out of their houses? I mean, I can go on and on about the problems that we're plaguing, that we have in this city. My seniors are hurting. But we can continue to find billions of dollars to pay for people who don't pay into this system. We using art money that's supposed to come to us in this city. The federal relief money was designed to help the people of the city of Chicago. Money that was supposed to go towards our seniors that were hurt by the COVID problem. It was basically the COVID problem that hurt all of us here. All the jobs that were being, that we lost. All the people that we lost. That money is supposed to go towards us, but we're going to use that art money and we're just going to use it on people who were not even affected by COVID here in the city of Chicago. When are we going to help us? When are we going to help the- When are we going to help the people here? That's all I'm saying. Help the people here so we can find money for everybody else but us. Ladies and gentlemen, our priorities are wrong. Our priorities are wrong in this city. And I'm going to close on this note. The people of Chicago spoke when they voted against Bring Chicago Home. They voted against it, right? So they said no to Bring Chicago Home. So what they're telling us today is to leave Chicago alone. And that's what we need to do. Leave Chicago alone, take care of our own, and let's do the right thing by our people here in the city of Chicago, ladies and gentlemen. Vote no, show some courage, and let's do the right thing by the people here that are paying taxes every single day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think back to November of '23 when we were going through the budget talks and we talked about the budget for 2024 and how we set aside $150 million for migrants. And I think about how we said, on average, we're spending about $35 million a month to go towards migrants. So therefore, as my colleague Alderman Beal just mentioned, this would only last four months, $150 million. And sure enough, here on April 19th, we're asking for an additional $70 million. Not to mention the $600 million already from the state and the county, which brings us somewhere near about that $1 billion mark, which Alderman Beal just mentioned. My concern is that in July, we're going to ask for another 60, 70, or 80 million dollars. You know what we're going to do? We'll blame it on the DNC's coming. Or we'll blame it on that bad man in Texas, Governor Abbott. And we'll try to shine the light away from the reckless spending that we're agreeing on right now. That's what we'll do. And where's the money going? Who's the money getting? Who's getting the money? Good question. It ain't Chicagoans and it ain't the migrants. I read an article last year about the $51 million that we agreed that we would give towards the migrants. And of that $51 million, 47 million went towards administrative cost. In November, I pleaded and I said, "Right here, we need to pump the brakes on this bus before we go over the financial cliff, which is only hurting taxpayers in this city." Come October, you know what we'll do. We'll ask for another property tax increase. You know the game. No property tax increase in '24, but as I said in November, we will damn sure have one in '25 and '26, but we won't do it in '27 because that's an election year, as I said. And we don't ask Alderman to vote on a property tax increase when it's time for reelection. I also mentioned you can order steaks all you want from the menu, but somebody's got to pay. Problem is, the ones paying ain't eating. Only ones eating are those with the contracts and they're at an all-you-can-eat buffet. My community and many other Chicagoans are fed up. People are leaving this city and can you blame them? You have a 67-year-old woman in Portage Park walking down the street at 11:15 a.m. to the grocery store. She gets beat up by four thugs who takes her phone and any other little miscellaneous things that she had. Here's a crazy idea. Let's take that $1 billion and let's start addressing crime. Let's invest in our Black, Brown, and White communities to help, I don't know, Chicagoans. Let's help veterans find housing. Let's build better schools and parks for our kids. The only difference from where I stand now and where I stood in November and May of last year was that I was a no then. Today, I'm a hell no. And until we start addressing the crime in this city and start helping Chicagoans, I'll continue to be a hard hell no. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Seixel Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And what we see today, and again, is the bigotry, the bigotry and the ignorance of the same people that are likely going to vote against the very same thing that they claim to put $1.2 billion in the poorest areas of the city of Chicago. You're going to see the hypocrisy of the bigotry and ignorance of the same people who in 2019 voted in favor of $2.3 billion for two developers that promised over 20,000 units of housing. We had to see a unit from the same people who pay these puppets, these bigots and ignorants that continue to pitch us against each other. Today, we even hear some nonsense about the city, the city creating these problems. Is the city putting people in inhumane conditions in buses to come to our city? Or is the fascist governor of Texas who continues to do that despite all efforts to stop them? These are the same bigots and the same people that we battled for so long. I want to remember my good friend who just passed away, Pastor Lynn Coleman, who warned us about these hypocrites, the same people who said that immigrants go pay into the system. Shame on you for discounting the reality and the facts. Immigrants contribute and make our cities. And a strong call for the same party that is forgetting them. We were just a few years ago called essential workers. Today, we're called criminals by the same bigots, the same Verdolia 29 that tried to divide us in the 80s. They're coming back. You'll see the next vote and start counting. Those are the people who we should label as those who support Abbott in their mission to create chaos in the city. There's no mistake that Abbott has made as a target because of the DNC and they continue to try to pitch us against each other. They continue to tell us that we need to look the other way to the inhumanity. So today, what we're saying is that our city needs help. That's what Mayor Johnson and many of us, and I thank my colleagues who have come to the border to look at the facts, and we'll continue to ask the federal government to take action. I'm thankful for the state and the county to sit with us now finally so that we have a united front against bigotry and ignorance, the same ignorance that talking about a billion-dollar deficit. This is that $70 million that comes from an emergency in reserves and we will make no mistake, we're going to ask the federal government to reimburse because we are doing their bidding, their job. And the $5 billion, and I'm here, in fact, talking with many colleagues, are the other five destination cities that are forgotten. And immigrants, make no mistake about it, just that our Black residents and our white people residents, as Reverend Coleman reminded us, made the core and the social fabric of the city. We together, we've got to condemn the racism, the bigotry that continues to try to separate the audacity in 2019 to vote for $2.3 billion with no outcome. And I you see, the same bigots who are going to vote no on the $2 and $1.2 billion that we want to put in the poorest areas of the city of Chicago. Let's talk about the elephant in the room, though. The 80,000 units that are vacant in the city of Chicago while the same developers hoard the property, hijack rents, and make sure that Black and Brown and working poor people pay those subsidies. That is the elephant in the room and the billions of dollars that we receive on top of that. That is the bigotry. That is the elephant in the room that they talked about. So let's today remember who are those interests trying to divide us and make sure that we do justice to the injustices that we see. This $70 million will do just the minimum to prevent chaos. To say that we are looking and that we're doing this to ourselves is not only ignorant, but is malicious. And we together, as a city, will prevail, as in the 80s Mayor Washington prevailed. Today, I ask my colleagues, as an immigrant, not a criminal, an immigrant, a father, like many others, that contribute to the system, that contribute to taxes, and make no mistake, make no mistake, that that is a way to stop a patient problem as well. So I ask my colleagues to do the minimum and work with us to make sure that we ask the federal government to reimburse us the minimum they can do, and let's do the minimum to prevent chaos in the city. I am in full support to vote yes on the $70 million and to stop the bigotry and ignorance that tried to divide us and conquer. Thank you so much, President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes, the chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, the people who spoke earlier, some are people from public comments, spoke out in favor of the $70 million, but also spoke out against Shot Spatter. Unfortunately, are the voices that are not representative of those communities that this are affected by. And one of the things that I did, let me start with this story. This word conundrum comes up because what I see in my community, I see residents calling me, saying, "How can I help the migrants? Where can I give some clothes, some food?" I see myself when I'm driving through the alleys, looking around, trying to keep our alleys clean or, you know, see what potholes are out there, migrants going through the garbage, looking for something. Then I find myself going back to my house, finding some clothes because that's my heart. But the conundrum comes, these same people that when I reach out to and say, "How should I vote on this?", they say, "No." They say no because they say, "Alderman, as much as my heart goes out and as much as our hearts goes out, we're not seeing it in our community." And that's a conundrum. That means they want to help, but they want help. I say, "Well, I fought and I argued in the mayor, and administration put $10 million in and they listened for, so you don't have to go through a lottery program for roof and porch." They say, "David, where is that?" I'm saying, "They waiting to roll out the program." I'm asking, "Still nothing." I can't help Ms. Jones when her porch is falling down. I have to give something. I got my little kid saying, "Alderman, when we going to get a new field house?" I'm saying, "I'm working on it." "Well, why you working on it and this is coming up and happening?" I got a situation where our SSA has expired in '32, no fault of the organization of his own, and we supposed to help support that SSA this year, but they saying they can't find any money. I have to go back and tell them that in the face of saying, "But yet they found money for this." That's the conundrum. That's the conundrum. And so as I put this vote out, as I always listen to my residents, whether it's via Facebook, email, phone calls, response back, the people that supported me are saying, "No." They put me in office. I have to listen to my residents. I'm mandated to listen to my residents. I think we're all mandated because they're your residents as well. And that loud voice is saying, "No." And so we have to make sure that these things we put in place or any programs that we put in place, that they're rolling out and seeing the benefits of it so they won't be in this conundrum to want to give, but yet have to say no because they're not getting. And so I have to stand to speak, not on behalf of David Moore, but on behalf of those 17th Ward residents who told me what to vote today. And so I have to be a no on this item. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Lasparra.
Hey, thank you very much, Chair. I will say, if I had known that there'd be so many elephants in the room today, I would have invited my daughter. Big fan of elephants, would have loved this meeting. On a serious note, two things that come to mind on this. When we talk about our migrants not being able to pay taxes, you're right, like that is truly frustrating. And the fact is, it's really hard to pay taxes in a city where the federal government will not permit you to work. And so I'm glad that Secretary Mayorkas is on the back end of his nonsensical impeachment trial, a couple thousand miles away from here, so that he can get to work with you, with Governor Pritzker, on significant public benefit so we can fill these labor gaps in our city, so that we can allow people who want to work to work. Now, with my colleagues talking about disinvestment in their community, like that truly is heartbreaking and frustrating. And I will say to that, I hope folks even now who are getting no votes ready for this ordinance, if you are, are getting their yes votes ready for an hour or so from now because we've got the ordinance that people are looking for. If you want this city to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on economic development, on housing, on small homeowner repair, on homeownership opportunities, on affordable rental in your communities, to say nothing of returning hundreds of millions of dollars to CPS, to the Park District so that they can look for the bond issuance authority against that, to do more robust capital budgets of their own, we've got that ordinance. It's a beautiful, thoughtful ordinance, and I'm excited to vote yes on that one first. Second, but let's move through this because it's thoughtful, again, very, very comprehensive briefings by your team who have literally predicted the erraticness, the pace of what and the number of folks that we're expecting to receive. They have thought really thoughtfully on cost cutting by hiring more Chicagoans, by working with more Chicago-based NGOs. What we are doing is creating a sustainable path until that point that the federal government does what they should have done a year ago and create the pathway to economic sustainability for these new residents of ours. But they are Chicagoans. Everyone who is here is a Chicagoan regardless of their citizenship, regardless of their status, they're Chicagoans. And I firmly believe anyone who is a Chicagoan deserves our care, our generosity, and our compassion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I've stood here and I've talked a lot about the migrant crisis, and in the 11th Ward, we've never had a shelter. We regularly had up to 300, 350 migrants in front of our police station and right across the border between 11 and 25 is the Halsted and Surmac Shelter where there's some 2,000 migrants in this building. And I think we need to do better as a city managing our money. We definitely do. I think you've heard here today and from a lot of the public comment, from constituents alike, about where's all this money going? I mean, the reality is, and I'm a person that will call a spade a spade. Look, we are, we're paying Ritz-Carlton rates for Super 8 service. I wouldn't want to be a migrant living in the shelter on Halsted. We've had a free shop that we've run with volunteers and mutual aid group for a little over a year now, and we've heard from migrants what their experiences have been. And I was one of the first ones to raise concerns about the shelter on Halsted, about the living conditions. And then unfortunately, a little boy died there. And then we got the measles outbreak and we heard about tuberculosis. And last week, I talked about herpes. There's a lot that needs to be done and we need to be taking better care of people who are in our care. And the reality is, this $70 million is going to help us lock arms with the county and with the state together to do this. But we have to do that in a way that is transparent and we owe that to all of the residents of the city of Chicago because nobody's wrong in this conversation. And it shouldn't be a choice of either or. This absolutely and must be a both and. This proposed transition to a unified shelter system is absolutely necessary. And, you know, if we had a time machine, I think we probably would have done it by now, but we're working on it. I wish we were working faster and that we were six months, a year ahead from now so that we could have a unified system that addresses this entire crisis of the unhoused and that we're not putting one group against another. But not injecting funds into the handling of this crisis would absolutely be irresponsible at this point. We don't control the flow. We got hit with tens of thousands of people and we're expecting to get hit with tens of thousands more. And if we don't do that, my fear is that what we saw last summer with 350 people regularly in front of my police district turned into 3,000 just along Halsted Street. We talk about the root causes of crime, unemployment, housing instability, and education without investing and investing responsibly in solutions for these migrants that are here. And our hands are tied because they can't have work permits, most of them. And we have to continue to insist and lobby and I think get better organized on how we get to the federal government about the help that they're sending. Yes, we're getting $20 million in grant money. Great, that'll get us through half a month. I'm not ungrateful for the money that's coming from the federal government, but I think we would all agree in here that it needs to be a hell of a lot more. That said, this $70 million... That said, this $70 million is the responsible thing to do. How these funds are dispersed has to be shared transparently with the city council, and in detail. Our contracts, our contracts have been bloated, and we know that. And we have to continue to work to make sure that money is flowing back into the pockets of Chicagoans, hire city workers, local firms, and fewer contractors out. You know, if we didn't have so many contractors and we were hiring people full-time, guess what? They'd be feeding into the pension system too. With that, Mr. President, I think you're going to sit down now. Vote your conscience here, guys.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good Friday afternoon to everyone. Before I begin, I want to just give a quick recognition to all of the undocumented individuals in my ward, in our communities, who came here without manipulating asylum, and have never once been given dollar one as they pursued their American dream here. They are the backbone that everyone is referring to, not the individuals we're talking about We've heard many individuals, and to be clear, we are talking about the 39,000 individuals out of the nearly 7 million, who over the last three years have crossed borders in California, in Arizona, in Texas, from 150 different countries, and have manipulated our asylum process to come in through the back door. Worse, we could blame Governor Abbott for getting the ball rolling on this discussion, absolutely, because he did. DeSantis tried, but Abbott got it going. But the real fault lies in the fact that our own federal government has prided itself on propping open the back door because the front door doesn't work. They've acknowledged time and time again, over the last three years, using this manipulation of asylum, of which there are only half a dozen categories to achieve asylum, and stating that we're going to use this process to get people into this country. Overwhelmingly, asylum cases are based on the claim of economic opportunity. Incidentally, not one of the six to grant merit. And here we are, Mr. President, discussing the border crisis, as I've said time and time again, that has become our backyard crisis. We have seen a saga play out from one administration to the next. And I've said to be perfectly fair to you, Mr. President, God bless you, whoever sneezed, that this did not start with you. Our former mayor thought a few tirades on TV was going to scare elected officials from sending people here. It did not. It hardened the resolve to prove a point then, which has now been doubled over as the DNC chooses to make Chicago its home in a few months. But as we talk about the treatment, as we talk about what's going on, we have to also recognize that our own federal government has also sent people here, that our own fellow Democratic leaders who intend to show up and parade themselves up and down the City of Chicago in August have sent people here. Denver is not a Republican-controlled city, and yet they openly tell people, go to Chicago because we're all booked here. The City of New York, Eric Adams, another Democratic leader, go to Chicago because we have no more money, we can build no more tents, go there. Everyone, Democrat or Republican or anything in between, is saying, go, 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 because as my colleague said, the spigot still flows. And what is that spigot paying for? Some of our speakers, even some of our colleagues, have said, people have been treated like livestock. They've been treated inhumanely. And they've been treated like that by the hands of the City of Chicago, right here in our own neighborhood. As our other colleague just pointed out, Jean Carlos Martinez Rivera was the little boy who was killed, because of our ineptitude. Died in a filthy warehouse with sewage and cockroaches, lice, measles, tuberculosis, everything that we warned this administration, this city that was on its way, that was here, and everyone chose to ignore, because we are all about the politics and not about the people that we were trying supposedly to help. That's the hypocrisy. That, ladies and gentlemen, is our failure. And it's a failure that continues, because we are under an emergency declaration, which is still in effect, signed by a former mayor, Lightfoot, on her way out, declaring this migrant crisis an emergency. It was confirmed again after committee, and it refers to a section, especially when we talk about money, that the administration, our departments are required to report quarterly in, not an executive order, but in the municipal code. Our own laws say that we must hear quarterly, in an emergency situation, where the money goes if we spend over $1 million. We're already past $200 million this year alone. I have yet to see a report. This quarter, last quarter, the quarter before that, or the quarter before that. You could talk about dashboards, you could talk about it's here, it's there. The law is clear what is required. And now, we're being asked to take $70 million to add to the 150, to get us at some point to $600 million out of the City of Chicago by 2024. But, Mr. President, we must be clear that this isn't found money, this isn't new money. This is money which came from the unassigned surpluses in budgets past, 2022, to be specific. When we talk to our constituents and say, we're taxing you X amount of dollars, it's with the anticipation that those dollars are going to be used in the budget, which is this thick, funding every department to provide services of every variety, whether it's road abatement, whether it's helping businesses, whether it's picking up garbage, police, you name it, we appropriate it. That's our job, to say, this is where the money's going to go. And then we find out, no, it didn't. Then we find out, we just happen to have $1.6 billion floating around. Do you know where those surpluses were? Sometimes it's from extra money that comes in, but mostly it's not enough money going out. Going out to folks, like one of my residents named Mary, who came to see me yesterday, Mr. President. Mary is a 94-year-old African-American senior. She has been trying to get home repairs that have been awarded to her, not once, not twice, but three times over four years, because we can't get the process right in this building. She came to see me today, yesterday, excuse me, because as the conditions get worse, she's still waiting and holding out hope, Mr. President, that we at some point in this building are going to deliver. Her sink stopped working. She has issues in her bathroom. I repeat, she's 94 years old. Going down the front steps is a crap shoot, if she's going to land on two feet or land on her face. She doesn't have the resources to do the repairs, which is where these programs come in so handy. But yet, we saw from COVID up until last year, with the administration change, the $8 million that we budgeted never went out the door. That is the surplus that we're going to tell people, we found, to go give to these individuals here? Mary will be dead by the time we get to finally helping her with programs that were meant to help them. And that story, Mr. President, isn't unique to the African-American community, Latino community, or any other community. We have folks all across the city that need help. And yet, the answer that we're going to tell them is, our surplus, your help, is going elsewhere. I can't do it. All the quotes that I keep hearing, people make biblical references about, one of them sticks to mind. Do unto others as you would do unto yourself. Look at what we're doing to our Chicagoans by failing to help them. We have to take care of our problems first. Then, as all of our communities are taken care of, or see that there's light at the end of the tunnel to help them, I guarantee you, not a single person in this room, Mr. President, would be in opposition to helping deal with the federal government's failures. But we're not. The West Side still has yet to recover from a flooding event in July, a year ago. We have communities where trees are falling out of abandoned buildings, from vacant lots onto buildings, can't help anybody. We can do better, Mr. President, because the only hypocrisy here is this notion that we are taking care of both sides equally. We are not. We are failing, again. And we have to recognize one last thing, and I'll close with this, what I closed with in committee. There's only one true elephant in the room, since that's the choice of the day. And that's the anticipation that Biden's going to win and somehow bring money. So we have to clear up a couple things. One, Biden's not touching this in an election year. Not going to happen. What we got is what we got. Two, he's in a competitive race where it literally separates two points from Donald Trump. I don't want to see the return of Donald Trump, but if that happens, how much money do you think Trump's going to give us? Where's that reimbursement going to come from, when the Make America Great flag is flying over the White House again? It won't come here. And we are steadily building and building an infrastructure on the hopes and dreams that the federal government's going to bail us out. That is an inaccurate and an incorrect gamble to make with the citizens of Chicago's money. We are not getting bailed out. We are not getting reimbursed, and no one's going to come with a federal check to pay for what's been happening. It will be on our residents, and it never should have been. I urge all my colleagues to say no, for a whole host of reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge that today, we're going to be voting on two things. We're going to be voting on 70 million, and we're going to be voting on $1.25 billion to say yes to economic development across the City of Chicago, acknowledging that it is the very backbone of our city. And we're going to go, we're going to vote yes for housing as a right, a bond issuance that understands that we have to house people who are currently living in tents, that we need to increase the funds to repair roofs, porches, and furnaces, that we need to preserve SROs and build affordable housing. Today, we're not just voting on 70 million to continue the migrant mission, we're voting on $1.25 billion to say that we also see the need of Chicago residents. And so I hear what some of my colleagues are saying, I just don't want us to forget, there's another item on the agenda today. There's a lot of theoretical talk and a lot of wondering what if, when, and how this may happen, just want to talk about a couple of facts. We have 3,200 children, 3,200 children in our shelter system. Where will they go when we can no longer operate our shelters? Now, these children, from being two months, a couple weeks old, to 12, 13, 14-year-old children, they didn't charter those buses and ask to come to Chicago, but they are here in our care. 17,000, over 17,000 children have enrolled in CPS, right here in this city, getting an education with us. Thousands of families who have come from Venezuela and parts of Central America to the United States to seek a better life. My sister, who is 100% Cuban, migrated here at the age of nine, and was lucky to have a government that wrapped around her. She's now a doctor, serving this country. My sister-in-law migrated here at the age of eight, from Trinidad. She's now helping young people get all of their student loans forgiven. There are people who have migrated here from all over the world, and this is not the first time that has happened here in the City of Chicago. In fact, in the 1950s and 60s, we seen a mass migration of Puerto Ricans to Chicago. And I happen to represent the largest Puerto Rican community in this city, filled with individuals who have chosen to do great things for this city. This rhetoric that Venezuela is without crime is such a wild remark to make. It's not rooted in anything that's factual, but merely a statement to incite fear. Look, Chicago, we have our issues, issues that many of us who got elected are working every day to resolve. And I know for my colleagues who represent West and South Side communities that have historically been disinvested in, I know how frustrating it might be to hear some of us say, we're heartbroken, and that's the reality. And that's not enough, to hear us say that we want better, but rather, we must do the work to make sure that we invest in those communities. Today, I'll be voting yes on 70 million, and I'm also going to vote yes on the $1.25 billion bond issuance, so that we can make those investments. I ask my colleagues who may have walked in here today with the plan to vote no, ask yourselves, what happens to those children? What happens to those parents who came here to make sure that their children can have a better life? What happens when they don't have a shelter system that can support them? What happens when they don't have a bed to sleep in? What happens when they don't have food? What happens when they go to school the next morning hungry? It is the same issue that we are saying that we need to resolve here in the City of Chicago, but we're willing to exacerbate it by voting no on 70 million. I know that this issue is complicated. I do. I fully understand how complicated it is. But we all got elected to try to resolve for some real complicated issues. It's what, it's what allowed us to feel like we had any capacity or potential to be in elected office. And we have a lot of hard conversations ahead of us. I just ask ourselves to consider all of the lives that are in our care when we're voting for this budget amendment. Mr. President, I'll be voting yes on 70 million. I'll be voting yes on $1.25 billion, and I'll vote yes for everything that ensures that people who newly arrived to the City of Chicago, or people who have lived here their entire lives, have the right to housing, healthcare, education, and a safe community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have one more. I have one more speaker before the chair. There's one more speaker before the chair, unless there's anyone else wishes to speak. Okay. That's... Okay. Vasquez and Wagispack. And Yancy. So, sorry, Mr. Chair. There are now four more speakers before the chair closes. Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it's always an honor to serve here with my colleagues. Regardless if we're on the same side of issues or not, you know, I gotta admit, I do learn a lot. And if we're not on this issue, hopefully we'll be on the next couple. But this one's really important. This one's very important for our city of Chicago. You know, I want to thank the folks who came to speak, who are working day in and day out on this great opportunity for our city. This great challenge for our city. You know, in Little Village, I heard Eddie speak earlier, you know, day in and day out. This guy's working 24/7. Grew up in the neighborhood, still lives in the great city of Chicago, and is one of those people who's giving his heart and soul to try and make sure those young people that Jesse spoke of have a semi-decent place to stay. And let me tell you where Eddie's working. He's working at a former CVS that was closed in my ward, that was abandoned, that is now a shelter where children are living on cots and getting fed a couple of meals a day, but on stripped floors that aren't even painted. But Eddie and his crew, they went in there and they got some donations and there's a couple of children's book now there. They've done their best to provide very basic needs for the migrants who are coming today. Thank you, Eddie, for your work, and thank you to the Chicagoans who are stepping up in this critical moment. I also want to tell a story about a woman by the name of Maria. Obviously from the African diaspora, who came to this country and was one of the first residents of Pachowski Park when we opened back in May of last year. Maria brought a one-year-old and a three-year-old and a husband looking for work. Real nice family, beautiful family. I got to know the kids, got to know the family, and man, they're just beautiful people. Just beautiful people looking for a better life. They're just beautiful people looking for a way forward. Similar to the people who came to this country 150 years ago. The Italians and Irish who in the front paper, front pages of the Chicago Sun-Times, Chicago Tribune, go back, you could read it, said, why are these criminals coming to our city? 150 years later, here in this council, we have that same rhetoric. That ain't right. Maria and her two children and her husband came to this country for a better life. I didn't see Maria for months up until November of this past year, where the Chicago Bears came Salvation Army. DJ Moore from Chicago Bears was there at Salvation Army on 25th Mallard, right down the street from North Longdale in Little Village. And we were serving the poor meal. I got a tour of the Salvation Army that day. And in the back of that Salvation Army, I met some of the women who were creating, who were making the food for the individuals to be served that day. And who did I see that day after months? It was Maria. She was there in the back serving that food to our newest residents. She told me that her husband got work authorization and was now working in the construction field. And Maria was there to serve the community. That's what we're doing here. That's what we're doing here in our council. We are joining the county and the state who we called out some months ago. We are now joining them on this migrant mission. And I thank Governor Pritzker and the state legislature, who I know will step up after we step up. I thank Cook County Board President Tony Prokwinko and the Cook County Board that voted unanimously on this issue. Let us join the commissioners at Cook County. And hopefully, after our vote, let us join the governor and our legislature, who at the tune of 180 million have rose to the challenge and will rise to the challenge. I urge my colleagues who I serve with day in and day out to look in their hearts, look in their minds, and think critically about what this 70 million dollars means. It means that Eddie will get to go back to work and serve the basic, basic needs, very basic needs of those migrants who are coming here. And we are making a small investment in the future of our great city. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to thank our colleagues here for being here for the conversation. Every single member here has a population that they serve. And we as a city recognize how big this challenging crisis has been. But I wanted to talk about a couple of things that I've heard in this meeting that I wanted to ground us in because they're a bit concerning. When I hear Alderman Beal, Alderman Moore, Alderman Gardner, and Alderman Lopez raise up concerns about the folks who have been here prior to this crisis and how those populations haven't been served, that's not bigotry to me. When Alderman Gardner says, we've got a lot of Chicago funds that aren't going to either the migrants or the Chicagoans, that's not bigotry to me. And the reason why I want to ground that in is because I don't think the way to have this conversation is to question any of our colleagues' values or where their hearts are at. It is a clear thing that we've seen out here that sometimes the people that have been harmed the most are the most willing to extend their hand and hearts to help out somebody else. We have a community here in Chicago that for over 100 years has been maligned, has been broken, has been segregated, hasn't been invested in. So when I hear folks bringing up concerns, I don't hear anger. I hear hurt. I hear pain of a city that hasn't invested in people for decades, for generations, and us living through the city that bears the ramifications of that lack of investment. So when I hear a colleague say, hey, what about the people that have been here for decades? Where's the money for them? Where is that at? Where's the investment we need when we have people who were here before the migrants who also need a housing, who also need a support, who also need a job, who also need an investment? It is a reality that we understand that it hasn't been there. And the reason why I want to ground us in that is because this isn't a question of somebody's values. It's not. This is the exploitation of a division that we know has been in this city for a long time. And whenever that exploitation occurs, which happens often in our society, you got to think about who benefits from that division. When we're arguing amongst ourselves because we're all hurt in different manners, because we're representing different populations that have different perspectives, when we voice that pain and that division, who do you think is enjoying that situation? Because it's not a coincidence that buses are being sent here. It's not a coincidence that narrative about Chicago has been what it has been for decades from those who are outside looking in and live in cities I would never want to trade places with. Because this is the best city in the country and world. But think about who benefits from that. The folks that are sending buses out here want to see all of us fighting because this is Chicago, which is hosting the Democratic Convention. The reason I mention that is whether you vote for the 70 million or not, whether it gets approved or not, you are kidding yourselves if you think that's going to slow any of the buses down. Whether you call it a sanctuary city or not, you are kidding yourself if you think that's going to slow the buses down. The whole goal has been to disrupt the city and to break it and have us fighting amongst ourselves. And right now, everything is according to plan. The more people are watching, not just our city, the whole country, different parties are watching us fight right now. And if someone's intent is to exploit and divide us, they are racking up the scoreboard. Nothing about what's happening now is telling them, hey, we should chill on the buses. What they're saying is amp up. Whether they get the 70 million or not, these people are fighting amongst themselves, and we get to point the camera at Chicago and say, look at that. They're hosting the Democratic Party. The party's a disaster. They're a disaster. Their nominee is a disaster. So when it comes to November, you probably don't want to support that. And if you think that not voting for 70 million changes that, then you haven't been around in politics long enough, and you haven't been in these positions. Now, do we have questions that are real questions from our colleagues about the management of what's going on? About accountability? About transparency? Absolutely, absolutely. Y'all have seen me publicly raise up my concerns as well. But we also have to understand the challenges. We have a mayor who isn't here a year yet, that on day one, it was already a crisis. The first month, the buses started and continued ramping up. While he was still building relationships with some of us, getting to know what things are important in our wards, getting to know what are the priorities for the city, this thing was moving. This bus was going, and there were plenty of them happening. And we hadn't yet had the opportunity to build a relationship to really move as co-equal branches of government. If we did, we would be on the same page, asking for Biden to do what he needs to do to make sure Chicago is actually where it needs to be. Yeah, we can be grateful that we got 19 million. That's two weeks of the amount of money Chicago's put up to make sure we're moving forward. And it's not about the federal government giving us money. Because it is not the federal government's money. It is the taxpayers here and everywhere else in the country. It is our money we're talking about. So when we as a city in one nation are saying we need the help, we need to be seeing that support. I'm not going to blame Governor Abbott either. Because if you were on the border and you saw 10 times the amount that we're seeing, you would be trying to figure out how to solve yourself out of a situation. So it's not one person saying, hey, let's just go send it in and fight. It's also somebody trying to handle it in their own city, but a whole party that knows that they could benefit from us fighting. Are there things we can do together to get the process better? Absolutely. I appreciate that the governor is putting funds in. I appreciate that the board president is putting funds in. This is probably the first time they've gone to their legislative branch to ask for this. We've had to do it multiple times, four or five times over, which is why people are tired, which is why people are hurt here right now. So I understand why folks may not be on the same page. But I want people to keep an eye on what this is actually looking like. The buses aren't going to stop. The question you have to ask yourself is, for the 70 million dollars, do you want to see 11,000 people inside of shelter or outside of buildings? People do not disappear because the money doesn't show up. You're going to see your parks, they're going to look like it's a camping trip every day. Your viaducts, your streets, all that increases. Our mayor, in the last budget, put 250 million dollars toward the existing unhoused population. What we all know because we live here is that that's a drop in the bucket. If 250 millions could solve the problem, it would have been solved. We're asking for 70 to sustain this situation because the buses are not going to stop. They're going to ramp up between now and the convention. And if we don't do those funds, what people are considering is what Chicago looks like at that point. Let's keep it a hundred. If all of us here were not able to work and didn't have a place to live, what would you do to survive? What would you do so your kids could eat? What would you do to make sure that you could see tomorrow and try to be safe? I'm going to tell you what the reality is. You'd do whatever you could to try to figure out money to get food on the table. That would lead to more exploitation, trafficking concerns, which we already hear about, an increase in shoplifting and petty crime as people try to figure out what they need to do to survive. Those are all realities as well. And we all know from the young males that have been here even before the new arrivals. If they don't have any sense of community, who provides that sense of community for them when they don't feel it? What gang decides, hey, you ain't got nothing to eat, come roll with us? We'll make sure you got some food. We'll make sure you're hooked up. What you're doing by not voting on the 70 million isn't solving a problem, it's making it worse. And I apologize for even getting to that part of it because I don't like talking about it publicly, but each of us know when we talk to our constituents what those concerns are on the ground right now without even that investment to carry us through the year. So yes, I know it's pressure. I know our constituents are asking, it's like, when is this thing going to stop? When do we have to, like, why do we have to continue? Keep it real with them. It ain't stopping until after August, if that. If anything, it's ramping up. So we have to do the responsible thing, even though it's difficult, to make sure this doesn't go off the rails further. And so I appreciate all of my colleagues. Again, I'm not questioning any of your values in the conversations because I get when we have to talk to our constituents what that looks like. But I also know how hard the job is because of responsibilities you all take on every day. I would really hope that you all have the conversation with your neighbors so they have an understanding. People don't disappear because the money does. It's going to keep happening, and we have to do the right thing here, which is why I am in support. And I would say to our governor, to the state, we have a whole bunch of municipalities in this state. We appreciate the 180 million. We need some more of these cities to take on some level of capacity as well. Chicago is shouldering a lot because we believe in people, we invest in people. We got to make sure the city's going forward and not getting worse. That's why I'll be in support. I ask our colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Wagispack.
Thank you, Mr. President. At my core, Mr. President, I want to help these immigrants and do what we can for them to get a better life in this country, as I have done for many years. All of them want a better life, just like the constituents that my fellow Aldermen have talked about today that are speaking out against approving this funding. And by the way, on a side note, I apologize if I didn't call a Rule Six for our colleague who was demonizing and calling names of people or inferring that people are bigots in this body. That kind of rhetoric has to stop. My residents are torn on this issue because of the mishaps and fails over the past year, and I have been too. They want appropriate spending. They want accountability. And so do I, but I look at this with a slightly different lens. Last year, we watched as Governor Pritzker, who had asked us to approve the first tranche of funding, was vilified by people in this administration for his efforts to increase oversight and transparency over state funding for migrants. There was massive waste taking place with Garda, with Favorite, and all of us wanted to put a stop to it. They wanted accountability at the state level as well. And why wouldn't he want oversight? He has to be held accountable for all of the dollars that come from throughout the state. But at the time, was there pushback on this rhetoric? No. There were people pushed onto a toxic waste dump until the governor stepped in and did something right and took the potential hell away from these immigrants who would experience living on a toxic waste site. When elected officials asked for transparency, specifically when I asked why males in my migrant shelter in the 32nd Ward were wearing electronic monitoring around schools, parks, and with children in that shelter, I got zero response, zero. And that was unacceptable. We have to expect answers on behalf of our residents, and we deserve that. On the county side, they agreed to migrant funding this week. And one commissioner stated, the amount of money that's being dedicated to this humanitarian effort is impacting other communities in a way that is so visceral and is blowing back on the people that represent them. And that is Commissioner Tara Stamps from the West Side. So I understand what some of my colleagues are going through in those other areas as their constituents say no to additional funding. There was the CDC stepping in to deal with the first major measles outbreak originating in a self-made shelter that anywhere else in the United States would have been shut down overnight. And why wasn't it? We decry the death of a five-year-old child, Giancarlo Martinez Rivera, that shook everyone to the core but was brushed off as someone else's fault. We knew, and we said that the 2024 budget wasn't done with honesty, that we were going to hear somebody come back for more money. I voted against it for several reasons, and one of those included, as Alderman Beal said. Now, 99% of these migrants deserve the respect and the opportunity to make a life here. They deserve more than the rhetoric and gamesmanship this vote has created. There needs to be a toning down of the talking points, though. There needs to be people advocating for accountable funding by management. And if you cut a deal with the president or the governor, stand by that deal. Be honest and upfront. We need accountability, transparency, and abolish the rhetoric that's ruining our ability to govern our residents. I don't want any more kids to die on this watch just like you or be turned into a political prop. I don't want to see migrants get dumped down on the streets and end up in our viaducts. And that is why we wrote, signed that letter to push back on kicking them out of the shelters. I don't want more of our officers, our police officers beaten down while they're trying to help the migrants and then brushed off as that's their job. I don't want to hear about blaming some demon in Texas anymore. It's our responsibility. So even if this moves forward today, you can expect a lot more pushback on the expenditures that are not a personal piggy bank operating without oversight that our taxpayers demand. So despite all the problems this issue has brought to the city, I'm going to vote in favor of this funding today. But I really expect the nonsense to stop. I think everybody in this room has had enough. I've had enough of the name-calling. I've had enough of the attacks on our colleagues without a word, Mr. President, to say, put a stop to it. And again, I apologize for one of our colleagues going off today and doing that. But it also is incumbent upon you to help us get decorum back in this room. I am going to vote for this today. But I want to see accountability. I want to see transparency across the board. And I don't want to have us keep coming back and having to fight these fights over and over again and deal with an issue I understand was not our making. But now that it's in our lap, it is ours and we need to be held accountable for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like once again, black people in this city are being put in a position to vote against our own interests with a lose-lose proposition that asks us to be noble and sacrifice for others or wait on help that may never come. The city's migrant mission as Black Chicago was frustrated because your election, the election of a black mayor, could finally mean that the chief executive of the city would break the decades-long tradition to leave them black folks for last. Our streets are crumbling, our storefronts are vacant, our neighborhoods are unsafe, young people are hopeless, and our elders are losing their homes. Everything that is not on the South and West sides are thriving and we can't get any relief. I don't think the pain could be any more obvious. The South Shore community, zip code 60649, is now home to more resettled migrants than any other zip code in the city. In fact, the top five zip codes are in black neighborhoods. This is significant because 30 years ago, the CHA Plan for Transformation relocated thousands of displaced CHA residents in South Shore and other neighborhoods without the resources to support this new population. This once thriving and vibrant black community is now a shell of its former self and a ghetto stands in its place. Now, 30 years later, the South Shore community has the distinction of being one of the most affordable in the city while having the highest eviction rate in the city. The average rent for a one-bedroom apartment is around $1,200 a month, while the median income is just over $2,000 per month. Over 60% of South Shore residents spend more than a third of their income on housing-related costs. And more than half of South Shore residents live below the poverty line. Black Chicago is still feeling the effects of Chicago's racist housing covenants, which deny black families access to the American dream of homeownership and to billions of dollars in generational wealth. This city owes a debt to Black Chicago and it's time to pay up. Now, this migrant issue has been placed right in the laps of those same black folks. As I said, thousands of migrants have resettled in South Shore. Except this time, the city, county, and state have a plan to support them. Today, Aldermen and women are being asked to support a new $70 million investment in our migrant mission that coupled with money from the state and county will equal $300 million. The additional $230 million won't come if we don't come up with our portion. So this feels like strong-arm robbery. Now, some of my colleagues have the luxury of being able to vote no on this matter because it doesn't directly impact their wards, but I don't. As I stated earlier, thousands of migrants have resettled in South Shore. And without securing $300 million now, we'll surely spend more than $70 million later. Voting no won't stop migrants from coming here, won't make them leave. And I can't cut off my nose to spite my face. So while the city was able to tap into a rainy day fund to come up with $70 million to bring the migrants inside, black folks are left standing outside in the rain again. Mr. President, this is your chance to be bold and courageous and preserve the soul of Chicago by committing the same amount of money to black neighborhoods that has been spent to date on our migrant mission. $300 million since August of 2022. That money directed to black wards could drive infrastructure projects that put our residents to work, provide good jobs that build families and grow safe communities. But more than that, it signals that this administration will no longer put Black Chicago on the back burner. I invite you to work with the Black Caucus to develop a plan that puts those dollars to good use. And I invite the rest of my colleagues in this body to support the plan to resuscitate Black Chicago as the whole is only equal to the sum of its parts. Black Chicago is on life support and a cure rests with this body. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Originally, I said I wasn't going to say anything and just vote no. But I feel like my colleagues need to know that it's just not about the migrants. It's about the disinvestment, the neglect, the racism where black peoples came from. Knowing that many of you, and I've said it before, are here because of the work that black folks did. I was born in 1955. Tepo, Mississippi. Not far from where Emmett Till was killed. I don't think any of you around here know anything about working in no field, eight hours a day for $4 a day. You think you in the line for food to eat? That was my history, my story on the farms, chopping kite. That's because making it for the young generation that here now. But as I look back, my community is still struggling. Still struggling today. And it's only because of racism. Racism, when you're black, you can't change your color. So you're going to have to work that much harder. When you're black, you got to know how to walk a line in order to be able to succeed. When you're black, you got to have that family structure of value that holds you where you won't end up incarcerated in jail, out on the street smoking dope, or left out on the street homeless. When you're black, it's a struggle every day. And don't think it's nothing about migrants. I don't hate nobody. In fact, I was the first one to help the migrants coming in this city. Pastor John Zize, Race and Peace, over there to give them food because that's what we do, help folks. But I be doggone, I don't see the black folks getting that kind of help. I don't see my kids and my children in my neighborhood getting that type of support. I have to tell you that even coming out of the COVID, where is the help for them to be able to get back up? They was already at the back. What you want us to do, keep getting back? I don't want to leave this world and know that we haven't left anything for the children behind us. They can't get a house? Why? Because they don't speak bilingual. Y'all, you follow me? I hope you feel me. And you want to put a whole another generation in? And yet, they don't speak two languages. English supposed to be the American language. English supposed to be the American language. But no, not now, because you go get a job if you don't speak bilingual, you're not qualified, you can't get the job. So now we're losing jobs. I just want you to know. I'm not voting no because I don't like someone. I'm voting no because no one bothered to try to help me or help any of my peoples the six to eight years I've been on earth. And I don't let my mother, my grandparents, my grandparents riding boats. Y'all don't know, riding horses. Y'all wasn't back there during that time, they done paid away for you. And now we want to just give everything. Just give it over. I got issues right now. Mayor Hughes was with you yesterday. What the kids say, they don't feel safe. The only place they feel safe at is in their home. In their home. Now, I said, wow. I know I don't feel safe in the neighborhood, but when the kids start saying it and the seniors start saying it, then we got a problem. So why aren't we looking at some money for safety? So that we can move to and from? Because if you ain't got safe, you don't feel safe. What do you have? That's a serious problem. How can they get an education? They don't feel safe. All I can say, Lord, help us. You know, you quote in the Bible. The Bible say, "Love your neighbor as yourself." Now you telling me that I got to love somebody I don't even know? I can't talk to, I can't even see them, and I'm going to love them as myself? What about the people right there next to me? Can I help them? And I don't even have to tell you. You don't know about the flood? We still struggling, yeah. Yeah. I'm meeting people every day, still got mold in the house, begging for help. Thank the Lord, we still trying to help them. I'll never give up on them. But I ain't finna put somebody else over there because they are the ones that's here, trying to stay in these houses, trying to stay here while others trying to take. Want to take something from them. You can't pay your taxes, I'm going to take it. You can't fix up your house, I'm going to turn you in. I'm going to turn you in because I want your house. Y'all know what we got going on out there? Stop trying to take. Let me tell my colleagues on the other side of the black. Anything you want to do, why don't you try to cut down on the credit and stop trying to take? Ain't nothing got to be taken, we can work together. You talk one thing and doing another one. Stop talking out of both sides of your mouth. And be truthful to what you're saying. You call it black and brown when you want to. But when it comes to really being black, then we got to get back because the brown got to get. Stop playing that game. I'm just going to tell you like it is because I got so old, I don't have nothing to lose, Mr. Mayor. I don't have nothing to lose at this point. And I can stand and say it, say it loud, I'm still black and I'm proud.
Thank you. Oh, that is our last speaker. So the chair recognizes, for the final comments, chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Somebody had their Wheaties this morning, huh? Well, let's, uh... Look at a couple of things here. I tell people all the time, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, but you're not entitled to your own set of facts. And the fact of the matter is that as a city, not only do we have a responsibility, we have an obligation to deal with the challenges however they have made it here but are here. This year, we will appropriate with this $220 million toward this unfortunate circumstance. We'll appropriate additional funding toward other circumstances. But at the end of the day, it's incumbent upon us to try to figure out how do we work together to solve the challenges that we face? All this conversation, we talking about $70 million. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a $16.5 billion corporation. And if we can't find resources to work and help the challenges, again, hear a lot of no's. We hear a lot of people say, let's work. $16.5 billion in the book. I'm sure we can figure out if we work collectively. I told somebody this the other day, division is more than the street between Crystal and Hat. It's a form of subtraction. It's how we divide ourselves and subtract that we can't figure out how to come together. And who wins in division? That's the question. Who wins in division? That's going to take all of us to work together to come up with solutions, not just on this, but the challenges that Alderman Metz talked about, the challenges that Alderman Lopez talked about, the challenges that we all talk about because we're all in this together. We're all Chicagoans. And we have to work toward the challenges of Chicago. Yes, today is this. Tomorrow, I'm sure it'll be something else. One of the things we talk about, I say this all the time, that fair exchange is not robbery. And I would hope that we figure out a way to work together. Because again, there are going to be points where it may not be an instant of benefit for my residents or for your residents. But it's through the collective that if we can help build Chicago, we all win. They said, "A rising tide lifts all boats." But again, we cannot continue to divide ourselves into such small pieces that we become ineffective. And who wins then? I'm sure the commentators on Fox will talk about this and that. But again, the politics of division, the politics of subtraction, is not going to benefit us as a whole. And I stand ready to work with my colleagues from the Latino Caucus, the Women's Caucus, the Veterans Caucus, because again, it's about helping everybody. Ain't no doubt about I'm going to work with the people in the Black Caucus even though some of us can't work together. But we have to figure out what we can do to help lift everyone. Now granted, nobody's jumping up and down to go drop this type of money anywhere. But we have a responsibility as elected officials in this city, in this body, to do right by everybody. Not by your own little narrow piece of the pie. Because again, we have a responsibility and an obligation. That same responsibility and obligation goes toward everybody else in this city. And so again, I stand ready to work with everyone to work to solve the challenges and problems, not just along the migrant mission, not just on the West Side, not just on the South Side, not just on the North Side, but through all Chicago. Of course, yes, do we want to see our own folks do better? Everybody wants to see their communities do better. But at the same time, you can't do it by yourself. So we have to figure out ways to work together to get things done and to move this ball forward. Yes, is this a challenge? Yes, do we want to spend this money like this right now? Of course not. But again, we have an obligation and we have a responsibility to move this ball forward. And with that, I move passages by roll call vote.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to move this item by roll call. So Alders, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time. Adam Cleric.
Okay, voting is now open. Please hit refresh and please mark your vote. Okay, I will now call on those who have not yet marked their vote. Alder Person Robinson?
Yes.
Alder Person Robinson is a yes. Alderman Chico? Not present. Alderwoman Ramirez?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ramirez is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor?
No.
Alderwoman Taylor is a no. Alderman Sigcho Lopez?
Yeah.
Alderman Sigcho Lopez is a yes. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez? Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez? Alderwoman Clay?
Yes.
Alderwoman Clay is a yes. Alderwoman Silverstein?
Yes.
Alderwoman Silverstein is a yes. Alderwoman Silverstein is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez? Voting is now closed.
There are 30 yeas, 18 nays. This motion passes. The motion to reconsider, the Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez on the motion to reconsider. On the motion to reconsider, the Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Mr. Chair? Mr. President?
I move to reconsider the vote.
On the motion to reconsider, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell on the third piece.
The third piece of unfinished business was filed by Alderman Dow and calls for a vote on substitute ordinance 2024-0007838, which was deferred and published on April 17, 2024.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Chairperson, Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I filed a Rule 41 notice with the clerk of my intent to call for a vote on SO 2024-0007838, a substitute ordinance concerning issuance of $1.25 billion general obligation and/or securitization corporation bonds for housing and economic development programs. Following debate on this item, I reserve the right to close.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise, um, once again to not support this ordinance. Not because I don't think it's a good idea. I believe that we need development in this city. No question about it. I believe we need housing. I'm all for it. But the only reason that I'm not supporting it is because we could not make one small amendment. And that is to take the threshold from $5 million to $1 million. And doing that, that will empower this body to have more transparency, more input on what's going on with this bond issue. Now, when we have the Civic Federation in support of reducing the threshold from $5 million to $1 million, we have other experts saying we need to reduce the threshold from $5 million to $1 million. I think sometimes we need to listen to those people since we don't have our own budget analysis, our own parliamentarian, and our own legal department that represents us to really get down to the root cause. Now, again, I support the concept. I support the mission. I just don't support the threshold. And there's about, I think, 12 other Aldermen that feel the same way. So if we could've just negotiated in good faith and reduced that threshold, we could add instead of subtract. Because that's what we need to do in this body by bringing people together, is to get everybody on board. And so if we could just make that one provision, I'm all for it. I'll support it. I think the concept of it is good, but just that one issue. And before I close, Mr. President, uh, I want to go on the record and ask for a public apology from Alderman Sigcho Lopez for the name-calling and the, the... Just the consistent disrespect of people in this body. And I think he needs to apologize, because that, that type of behavior is not called for in this body. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Did Alderman Beal make a formal motion, or?
No, he did not. But thank you for asking that question.
Okay, thank you.
Please continue, Alderman.
We have a housing shortage in this city, which has led to an affordable housing shortage. And I support this initiative to spur development, to address this shortage and invest in all of Chicago. And I commend you, Mayor Johnson, and, and the CFO, and, and the DPD, and DOH commissioners for working to address it. I had asked in committee to reduce the authorization to a $350 million pilot program, which mirrors the cumulative total TIF expiration in the next four years. There wasn't an appetite for that drastic of a cut, and I get that. And I want to be clear that my, my objective was not about if we did this, but, but how we do it. We all know our city is in perilous financial shape. And taking out a billion-dollar loan, or even hundreds of millions, is a big obligation. I feel strongly on behalf of taxpayers that we need to do this right, not just fast. And as the CFO said Wednesday morning in committee, the maximum they plan on issuing is $250 million per year. Now, we were merely elected to be stewards of taxpayer dollars for the next three years. Now, Mr. Mayor, you'll be here another 23 years, but the rest of us may not be. So we should limit that obligation to the years that we were elected to serve and keep this to three years and change the authorization to $750 million. So what I'm proposing is to keep everything identical to the mayor's initiative, but limit the obligation to the years we were elected to serve, and therefore change the total authorization to $750 million. So, so my specific motion is to amend every word it says $1 billion, $250 million to $750 million, and again, keep everything else identical. So I specifically move under Rule 29 to amend the whereas clauses, Section 1.2 in two places, Section 2.2A, 3.1D, 3.2A, to read $750 million instead of $1.25 million. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and I ask for a roll call vote on that.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lasparra.
Yes, Mr. President. With respect, motion to lay that motion on the table.
There's a motion on the floor to lay the motion made by Alderman Conway on the table. There's a, there's a roll call request. So with the motion on the table to lay Alderman Conway's motion on the table, a yes vote means you wish to continue with the original ordinance, which is for $1.25 billion. If you vote no, you wish to have the conversation about the original motion for, from Alderman Conway to lower that amount. Please use your e-vote, um, application to record your vote. Madam Clerk.
The voting is now open. Please use your devices to mark your vote. If you are having difficulty, please raise your hand. Okay, I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alder Person Robinson?
Yes.
Alder Person Robinson is a yes. Alderwoman Ramirez?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ramirez is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Sigcho Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sigcho Lopez is a yes. Alderman Talia Farrow? Not present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Yes.
Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderwoman Clay?
Yes.
Alderwoman Clay is a yes. Alderwoman Silverstein?
Nay.
Alderwoman Silverstein is a no. Okay, voting is now closed.
There are 31 yeas, there are 18 nays. The motion to latest item on the table passes. Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. As I stand to discuss this bond deal, one of the things that came to mind is tools, tools, um, that we need to succeed. It also came to mind is, um, people in which you brought before us, Mr. President, to, um, to vote on for these positions. So like, we voted for Superintendent Snelling, who we felt or feel was going to do a great job. He's asking for a tool, like Shot Spotter, that I think we should have, because he said he needs that tool. I cannot be a hypocrite, because I trust and I voted for and believe in the person you put in as development. And she says she needs this tool to help West Inglewood, to help places like 69th Street between Ashland and Damon that has not had any investment in 23 years. Do you have a TIF over there, Alderman? No. This is what you need. So if you voted for me, and I'm telling you I need this tool, at least trust me as the subject matter expert. And that's what I'm doing here, Mr. Mayor. I'm trusting her as that subject matter expert, because we voted her in, and she says she need this tool. Said the same thing about Superintendent Snelling. So I can't be a hypocrite and say no to this. I also think it's a, um, a tool that we have to have right now, um, to be able to work with. We are limited on tools. When we talk about TIF even, and even our TIF areas, and hopefully we can still utilize some of those, which in the briefs we said, that we discussed, we said we'll do. But like, in the conversations, and as I'm looking at the numbers, some of those TIF districts are what? Poor. And we can't do the things that we need to do. And so I'm standing in support and asking my other colleagues to support this as we unanimously voted to put in Commissioner Bolt Wright, and let's give her the tools that she need to do the things that she need to do to help develop these challenging communities. So I stand in support of this, uh, Mr. Mayor, and I hope my colleagues will support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like many of my colleagues, I have been thinking about this ordinance and what it means for our city for many days now. And I support using money from expired TIFs to back bonds, especially since this doesn't raise taxes. I agree that we should repurpose revenue to support housing and economic development. That's a really good thing. However, we are being asked to sign a $1.25 billion check, and we just don't know what we're buying. A major issue for me is transparency and checks and balances. Mr. President, your office has placed a $5 million threshold for council review. And I, as I have shared with many of you and the administration, this threshold is just too high. $5 million is a lot of money. That's the entire infrastructure budget for three, over three entire wards. Which is my second point. Most of us use TIF money to supplement our infrastructure budgets, to pave streets, to install new light poles, and work on quality of life issues in all of our wards. I have asked the administration and the Finance Committee how we plan to address the loss of TIF infrastructure funding as we sunset these TIFs. I have been met with silence on this issue. At the end of the day, I have and will continue to support my colleagues and their really good projects. Allowing these projects to be approved through council at the $1 million threshold is another opportunity for transparency, for colleagues to share and showcase their projects before this body, and for these projects to be shared and showcased to the public. We should be welcoming this type of transparency. I will be voting no today on this ordinance. The threshold is too high for oversight, and there is not enough transparency. I do not believe that simply putting projects on a website is particularly transparent or is a pass for oversight. A webpage is not a substitute for robust dialogue in our committees nor in this body. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, um, will be supporting this ordinance. And I really wanted to commend our leadership in the Department of Housing and the Department of Development and their teams over there. Um, just a bit of a round of applause for you guys for working on this for so many months, however people are voting today. I'm voting for this because, um, I, I... You know, my colleague said many people use their TIFs, um, to help supplement infrastructure needs. My other colleague mentioned not having TIFs or having TIFs that are too poor. And that's more the situation that the 49th Ward is in. We have a lot of inequity actually around the city and our wards, whether, you know, it's menu money that doesn't go far enough because of the geographic size of needs that you've got to cover, or the fact that maybe one community has TIF dollars that they can use to help supplement their infrastructure. They can have nicer parks, they can give more things to their schools. And then you've got communities like mine that can't do that. And we have, I think, more of those throughout the city than the other kind. I know that, um, this project and the type of economic development it's going to allow, it's gonna support some things that we didn't really put enough money into already and that we need to find support for outside of ARPA dollars, like our community wealth building initiatives. When I think about the needs along Howard Street, or Morris Avenue, or Sheridan Road, or Clark Street, um, we don't have TIFs, not in a neighborhood opportunity zone, we're on the edge of the city. And the divestment that we've experienced for decades, um, has really gone unnoticed by the city. It's gone unnoticed by previous Departments of Development, and of course, we didn't have the Department of Housing for quite some time. Um, so I'm excited that communities like Rogers Park, um, like Inglewood, like Auburn Gresham, and other parts of the city who don't have development tools are finally going to get some attention. To concerns about the threshold, I think it's great, um, and definitely see the reasoning that some of my colleagues have some concerns. Um, but we also just spoke a lot, $5 million is not a lot of money. And when I think about the projects that we're working on already, uh, in, in parts of my ward, $5 million is a drop in the bucket. And I know, because we've already had this experience, um, with this administration, and particularly with the leaders that this administration has picked for those departments, that it's not just the mayor's office coming up with some plan for economic and community development in our communities. They're supporting our plans. They're working with our residents. We're having inclusive community processes where community members and constituents in our wards are going to be supporting these projects. So when we talk about that approval limit, yes, technically, these are things that aren't going to have to be signed off by all of city council. But I think with the processes that we have in place, with the leadership that we have in those departments, and the experiences that I have had already, I have full confidence that my community is going to be at the table, and I know that yours can too. If you are working on projects through this, your community will be at the table, your voice is going to be heard. And we know with the cost of capital projects these days, $5 million is nothing. A million is nothing, you guys. So I think this threshold is very appropriate. Um, to concerns about wanting a pilot, we're trying to cut the red tape. These pilots, setting up a pilot, setting time limits, wanting to come back. Um, I hear a lot from colleagues about wanting to erase bureaucracy or limit bureaucracy. Um, and I think that some of the amendments made, uh, both in committee and today, are just going to do the opposite. So thank you again to the DOH and DPD team. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your office and your team, uh, for bringing this forward. I am excited to get us moving forward on something that every single one of us has talked about that we need in our communities, especially those of us who aren't downtown. For those of us who don't have these TIFs, for these TIFs that are expiring, I am so glad that they served your communities. I'm looking forward to this money being returned to our agencies, and I'm looking forward to this revenue being used to help support a new wave of economic development through the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Lasparra. Very well. The Chair recognizes Alder Will Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I think the debate has been had. Um, I move a motion to call for the question.
Okay, there's a, a motion to call the question. First of all, hold on, hold on a second. We just had a conversation, you all, about decorum, okay? So let's not, we don't have to shout. We're going to work it through, okay? Just, everybody, just take a deep breath, please, all right? Alder Hall, there are just a few more speakers that wish to speak. Out of the interest of those voices, would you be willing to withdraw your motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
That worked very nicely. Thank you, Alder. His motion has been withdrawn. Alder Hall, do you wish to speak or have you already?
I've spoken.
Okay, very well. The Chair recognizes Alder Villegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderman Hall, for pushing that back. Mr. President, a couple of things. During the committee meeting, there were requests that were made that really, I think, would have made this a better ordinance. And everyone that knows me is that, everyone that knows me knows that when I introduce an ordinance, I listen to my colleagues and try to figure out a way, not just to get to 26 or 30, but really to try to get as high as possible, understanding that everyone is not going to agree with me. But here are some things that I wanted included. There was no commitment from. I requested a threshold dropped down to 2.5 billion. I know there's been some debate, million, 3 million. Again, I think 5 million is too high. That's just my personal opinion. But these are important, other important things that I think need to be talked about. As we're making these investments, 1.25 billion, I think it's important that we have US DOL apprenticeship programs in place to make sure that the investments that we're making are built, are being built by tradesmen and women that have experience. Also requiring the contractors to have apprenticeship hours so that way we can help diversify the workforce, whether it's at a 10% or a 25%, requiring that US DOL language. I had also requested that funds be parked in corridors so that way developers can take a look at where the need is at. And if they're used to working in certain areas, that they can go ahead and pursue that work. Again, no commitment. I'd ask for a trailer ordinance of some sort, similar to what we did with the O'Hare modernization. $8 billion. Let's have some type of Oversight Committee, Advisory Council, so that way we're not waiting five years and say, guess what? It didn't accomplish what it accomplished, what it was meant to accomplish, rather. Again, transparency. I've voted for every Invest Southwest project and every Neighborhood Opportunity Fund project. Every one of them, understanding that we got to make these investments. 42.5 million, 11.8, 40.2 million, 17.5 million, 51.7 million, 62.3 million, and so on. I voted for every one of them. It's the right thing to do. I was also, in the last term, the architect around the capital bill. $3.7 billion for a five-year program. And what that capital bill appropriation taught me was that you got to line item these projects or else you might not get one. So to solve that, that's why I had requested having corridors. So at least as we're putting forward and voting on a $1.25 billion deal, legislators can go back to their residents and say, hey, I supported this, but we know there's an opportunity of projects coming this way. I just, I'm just not there with this. And the fact that this administration did not want to even take one of these things and commit to it, that's not how I negotiate. And anytime something starts with a B in the billions, knowing that my community is not going to see a billion dollars of investments, there has to be some commitments. $3.7 billion capital bill. And I'm over here fighting for sidewalks, fighting for minor investments, begging the administration for simple things. And I'm the one, one of the aldermen that voted for that appropriation. So I cannot, in good conscience, vote on $1.25 billion without knowing that there's some funds that are going to be parked in corridors so that way we could pursue it. I've spoken to the Planning Commissioner. I have all the faith in what she does. This is not against her nor against the Housing Commissioner. But this is about not wanting to be fooled again. And so I've learned in my third term here that if you don't line item it, then I'm at the mercy of the administration. And so I'm not going to put myself in that position. And so I'll be voting no on this. I hope that this, I hope I'm wrong as it relates to the tools. But I think that we need to make sure that there's accountability, transparency, making sure that men and women associated with organized labor are participating on these contracts, making sure that we have apprenticeship hours put in place so we can get our high school students an opportunity to get into this career. I'll be voting no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Alder, Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to talk about just a couple of things. I know we're all getting ready to go here. To Alderman Conway and Beal and Nugent and Villegas, I share their concerns. I do think that this could be a very powerful and impactful program. But we weren't given some of the adjustments that we had requested. And of money initially, that was something I had an interest in. But the biggest sticking point for me really is on the transparency issue. And it was raised by all of those folks I just mentioned. The $5 million cap for aldermanic city council approval of projects is far too high. And we are talking about a massive amount of money here. And I would have a lot more trust in the program if I knew any investment over a million bucks needs to be vetted and approved by the 50 people who serve on the city council. And not just because it's our role as legislators to appropriate, but because the public then would get to see these projects before they're approved. A big part of having aldermanic oversight and approval, yes, it's about voting on actual issues, but it's really bringing in the light of day so our constituents can understand what it is we're spending money on. And I did not think that lowering the threshold to $1 million would unnecessarily gum up the works. One of my colleagues mentioned 5 million bucks is a drop in the bucket, no big deal. Last time I checked, 5 million bucks is a lot of money. And these aren't our dollars. This isn't play money. This money belongs to the taxpayer. And the way I look at things, we should be treating tax dollars like they're our very last ones. Not that we have endless supplies of them, because we don't. So I don't understand why us as legislators would not support lowering this cap to $1 million. Taking ourselves out of the conversation? What are we doing here? So I want to give you, Mayor, the opportunity to get a whole bunch more votes for this program, which is why pursuant to Rule 29, I'm making a motion to amend the ordinance, Section 2.19H on page 24, striking $5 million and replacing it with $1 million. And I've even brought physical copies for each of my colleagues if you'd like to see it. But it's really just one change. We're changing one number. And I would love to hear the explanation to not support this initiative when one of our primary responsibilities as aldermen is to serve as fiscal stewards. It's our job. Let's do it. So that said, Mayor, I make my motion and I would encourage my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a motion to strike the $5 million as the threshold. The Chair recognizes Alder Lasparra.
Yes, with respect, motion to lay this motion on the table.
There's a motion to lay the initial motion made by Alder Riley on the table. And just for clarity, if you vote yes to lay this motion on the table, you wish to continue to proceed with the original ordinance. If you vote no, you wish for a discussion on Alder Riley's motion to strike $5 million as the threshold. Members, please use your e-vote application to cast your vote. Madam Clerk.
Should be popping up. Give this one a second. There we go. Voting is now open. Please use your devices to mark your vote. Okay, I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alderperson Robinson.
Yes.
Alderperson Robinson is a yes. Alderwoman Ramirez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ramirez is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor.
No.
Alderwoman Taylor is a no. Alderman Sigcho Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sigcho Lopez is a yes. Alderman Talia Pharoah. Not present. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderwoman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Clay is a yes. Alderwoman Silverstein.
No.
Alderwoman Silverstein is a no. Voting. Talia Pharoah. Not present in chambers. Voting is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are 27 yeas and 22 nays. The motion to lay the initial motion on the table passes. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So first of all, I'm supporting this ordinance. And this $1.25 billion bond. And from what I understand is that the TIFs related to this is due to expire in the next five years. And I was looking at the list of the TIFs that's due to expire and most of the biggest ones come from the 27th Ward. The Central West TIF, $41 million. The River West TIF, $41 million. The Kingsbury TIF, $41 million. Chicago Kingsbury TIF, $41 million. That's a large percentage of this money that's going to be leveraged for a bond. So we've been blessed in our ward that, you know, that we've been, our increment has been going up for a long time. I remember back in the day, I had mostly TIFs on the east side. I had to fight to get a TIF on the west side. The Central West, the Central Park TIF, I had to fight to get in. Because I was like, why just have TIFs in the areas where it's expensive at? I need TIFs on the west side because, you know, this area needs development and one day, money is going to come that way. So we were blessed that we did that because now we port money from the Kenzie TIF. But also, we've been blessed to help balance the budget for many years in this city, coming from, starting from Mayor Rahm Emanuel, using our surplus, mostly from our TIFs, in order to do that. Of course, me and Alderman Riley both are blessed and some of his TIFs go into that also. But for the most part, ours. You know, the unique thing about TIFs is that when you do a surplus, we only get 20% in the city because the rest of it goes to the other taxing bodies. And then all of those other taxing bodies, their budgets get balanced because of what we have done here. Coincidentally, when these TIFs expire, the same thing happened. So we won't have to worry about the Board of Education because they're getting ready to get a whole bunch of money when these TIFs expire. When we expire these TIFs, the Board of Education is going to get a whole bunch of money. The Park District is going to get a whole bunch of money. The Water Recreation District, the Forest Reserve, you know, I can go on and on. All of those, I think it's what, five other taxing bodies? They all going to get money. So we don't need to worry about the TIF supplementing those things anymore because they're getting ready to get money, right? But that money is going into their general funds and now they'll be able to spend it in other places. You know, one of the things I find in areas where folks don't have TIFs and some of my colleagues mentioned it, I think, you know, Alderman Moore, I had to say, some of your comments were very articulate in reference to the TIFs and all of those things, that some areas don't have TIFs and they get lost out. Because right now, you have all, everybody, I'm telling you, every other sister agency, when they want to do something, Alderman, we want to do this, fix these schools up. Can I get some of your TIF money? Alderman, we want to fix this park up. Can I get some of your TIF money? You know, all these other sister agencies come to you because they utilize all your TIF money in order to make these things happen. But in the areas where you don't have TIFs, you don't have anything. In the areas where you don't have TIFs, when the Park District say they don't have no money, you can't get nothing done with your park. The areas where you don't have TIFs, where the Board of Education say they don't have the money, you can't get anything done. Now, but those areas that don't have TIFs, this leverage of this bond is going to help those areas, which is not my ward, I'm blessed. About more than 75% of my ward is in the TIF right now. Now, less now after we do this. But 75% of my ward is healthy and have leverage of dollars. But a lot of other wards don't. And a lot of people who've been voting against these things have some of those wards. And I don't understand why they're voting against it because this will give them an opportunity to negotiate, to try to get some things done that they don't necessarily have the resources to do in their wards right now. I don't understand it. I'm like, you know, dumbfounded by that. But at the same time, we talk about these bonds and spending the money and all of those things. Well, when these TIFs expire, this money goes back into the corporate fund. When it goes back into the corporate fund, who runs the corporate fund? You run the corporate fund. I'm like, what's the big deal? If it expires anyway, it's going to go back to the corporate fund, then you can say where it go. Let's stop playing. You know, all these little things remind me of council wars, man. I'm telling you, this is starting to remind me more and more of councils' wars. You know, it's interesting, every time there's a black dude up there, we see all this stuff going on. This is, I didn't see this with nobody else. It's like, we playing, it's like, I don't know what's going on. I feel like I'm in the middle of another game that's going on. You know, it's another game going on and I feel like I'm sitting here like, okay, I wish they had stopped playing the game so we can do what we do here, right? This is an opportunity. We have three years, guys. We have three years, guys. Three years. I'm telling you something, I do a lot of development in my ward. I do a ribbon cut, I do a groundbreaking. It take about three years before there's a ribbon cutting. If you all want to keep playing with this stuff and not have any ribbon cuttings to show your community that you did in your community, keep playing. Keep playing. But if you want to take the opportunity to negotiate with planning and housing and possibly some more infrastructure money outside of what you get out of your regular menu, get on board, man. Take care of your business, take care of your ward. This stuff was happening today, half the people don't even see this stuff. It's going to be gone. What they're going to recognize is what you did in your ward. What did you do in your ward? What ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, what kind of development is happening in your ward? Right now, the last administration had a lot of great ideas, Invest Southwest. You know, of course, you know, I'm the feeder ward. They fed off of the Neighborhood Opportunity Funds that started in my ward, got a lot of that money, they're getting some from Alderman Riley's ward, your ward. You know, some of us downtown, Pat Dowell's ward, right? We're the feeder wards, right? But right now, we're not feeding too well. We're not feeding too well because of the interest rates. I had like, I had three things, I had the three things on planning yesterday. You know, thank God. Haven't been getting a lot of things on planning lately. One of them was a major development that's going to bring a lot of NOF money and a lot of tax dollars to the city of Chicago. And some money in that TIF over there that probably, they probably going to take the surplus out of, which is the Kenzie TIF, and balance the budget again. But it's slowing down real slow because of the banks and the interest rates, guys. The mayor, the last mayor started a lot of things with the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund, you know, and started the Invest Southwest. But a lot of those things don't have money. A lot of projects are on hold, on the west and the south side. But also, there's potential projects that could happen on the northwest side, on the southwest side. Y'all just got to work this stuff, man. I don't know what y'all doing. Y'all got to work this thing, man, and make it work. You got somebody willing to work with you if you just try to work it. You know, I mean, fighting all the time, you know, we leaving people behind. There's opportunities to do things in the city, in your wards, with this bond deal that's going down. You know, if I was you, I wouldn't want to be on the other side of this bond deal. I want to be on the inside of this bond deal so I can get stuff done in my ward. So when that three years is up, I have something to point to. But the thing is, if we don't do anything, if we don't do anything right now to help with this, you know, and the reason why I support a lot of money coming from my ward and going into Invest Southwest and, you know, helping with the budget and all that stuff, is because I know what happens to one of us affects all of us. You know, if somebody builds, if somebody, like right now, she got a big project in her ward, a big hospital project. She builds over there, utilize some of the money from my ward, it's going to spread over to my ward. So now, all those people working at that hospital may want to move. Well, they may want to move to my ward. So it helps with development, and so on and so forth. And she's saying, no, you can't have it all now. Give me some money over there. But at the same time, we need to spread this tax base across the city. We cannot keep taking money just from the central area. And the only way that we can spread this tax base is if we spark development across the city. If we spark development and attract people to come all over the city and fill in all these vacant, could you imagine if all the vacant lots in the city was filled up? How much tax dollars the city would get? How balanced our budgets would be? How many more things that we can do? We need to help our colleagues. Yeah, it'd help the mayor, but we need to help our colleagues. We need to help our other communities to be able to develop, to be able to spread the wealth across the city because it helps everybody else. Because I know, when Michelle's ward is doing good, and people moving over there, and they moving to the city, and our population grows, and we able to get more money from the state and the federal government, I know a lot of those people going to come to my ward and spend some money. And my business is going to do good, and my people are going to be able to work. And my schools will get filled up, and so on and so forth, guys. This is an opportunity to leverage some dollars that's going to go to the general funds anyway. It's going to be in the general funds anyway. He's going to control it anyway. It's going to be in the general funds anyway because it's expiring. Let's leverage those dollars, make something happen, make some things happen in our ward. I support this, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you much, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, good afternoon, members of the City Council. You know, I just want to take a moment to give a shout out to Walter for hitting the high note five times in his speech. That was truly, you go for six, go ahead. I was sitting here counting it, I was just in awe. And believe it or not, Mr. President, I'm almost in agreement with everything that my colleague said. Like so many in this room, we have long advocated for resources that go beyond the TIF district, that go beyond the enterprise zones, that go beyond the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund, which, just so everyone remembers, you know, we did that under Mayor Emanuel. And I'm proud to say that, you know, I was able to include the back of the yards and new city areas as the only Latino district at that time that was part of this program. But I take umbrage with the comments we just heard because all of that was predicated on having a partner who, and I quote, "is willing to work with you." What we just saw not 10 minutes ago is a partner unwilling to work with 22 members of the City Council on addressing a singular concern over how much should be the proper threshold. We've been having this debate, this discussion, which seems to be a sticking point for nearly 45% of the people in this room ever since this original proposal was made. Almost unanimously, Mr. President, this debate, these discussions has not been about the magnitude of your vision or the need for this opportunity. It's been about our participation. And I will remind members of the City Council that the original bill actually had us never meeting or doing anything for four years because it was written saying that it's too cumbersome and unproductive to have us included in that process. And I'm very thankful to Chairman Dowell and your team for removing that outrageous language when this was originally introduced. But sadly, that sentiment, that feeling that we are a hindrance in supporting each other still remains. I have never seen scenarios where we did not support each other when it came to investing in our communities. Every request, for as long as I've been here, has usually gone through unanimously when it came time to using, whether it's grant money, TIF money, whatever money, into another alderman's ward. Because collectively, we understand that while it may not be my ward, you are the best steward of your ward and should be part of that discussion, should be leading the charge, as my colleague stated. But that requires us to be able to have a partner who listens, who hears, and who brings us to the table. We are now at the cusp of willingly allowing us not to be a part of this discussion on $258 million every year, if I'm not mistaken. We won't know what the projects are because the language was changed in the last substitute to say that it's not a matter of reporting what is being earmarked, but what is being spent after it's finally outlaid. Making participation, making transparency even harder because this says that we're not going to tell you until the check is written. So I won't even know what you're planning, what the bureaucratic machine upstairs is planning. And that has also, by the way, been a major criticism for three mayors that I've now served under because all of us know about the, for those of us who have TIFs, the TIF Investment Committee, the TIC, which meets usually without us to decide what projects and how much, especially when they're not coming here. Hundreds of millions of dollars, especially under the last administration, went out without us ever being a part of the equation. But yet, we are here today to try and replicate that same failed lack of transparency. I told your team, Mr. President, that I actually wanted and looked forward to supporting this. That I believed that there were two things that had to be fixed, but I'll settle on the one. And it's the same one that my colleagues have brought up time and time again. Because I think that our goal, your goal, shouldn't be to follow the same path as your predecessor who said, "I'm only going to govern the 26." That we're only going to go for the bare minimum to move forward. We saw how that worked out for her. And we also saw how that program of Invest Southwest worked out for our communities. It didn't. We should be able to create a collaborative process that works better, builds better, builds stronger. All of the key words that you push forward. This could be the catalyst for that. I have faith in your team, in the commissioners who are there, believe it or not, excited to talk and discuss and happy. But there should be compromise in a way to include all of this body back in that conversation, Mr. President. For everybody that I keep seeing moving to table every kind of change tells me we don't have partners willing to work together. That we have individuals who are more obsessed with keeping it in their wheelhouse than trying to including all of us. So I'm going to try again. Because I too, Mr. President, take issue with Section 2.19H. But I'll split the baby and give us one last time to find a way to make this as almost a unanimous approval as possible by moving to amend on its face under Rule 29, Section 2.19H, from $5 million to $2.5 million. That is more than what most want, less than what you want, but it gives us the opportunity to have that conversation. And I would call the question after that motion.
There's a motion on the floor to lower the threshold from $5 million to $2.5 million.
And I called the question.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you, Mr. President. I motion to lay that motion on the table.
There's a motion on the floor to lay Alderman Lopez's motion on the table. Please use your... It is not out of order, okay? There's already a motion on the floor, and that motion has been accepted. Madam Clerk, Alders, please use your e-vote applications to cash your vote. I do not recognize... So you may cash your votes now. If you vote yes, if you vote yes, you wish to continue with the original ordinance, the $1.25 billion with the $5 million threshold. If you vote no, you wish to consider the motion from Alderman Lopez to lower the threshold from $5 million to $2.5 million. The motion to lay Alderman Lopez's motion on the table is now open for voting.
Just refreshing. There we go. Motion is open. Please mark your vote on your devices. I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alder Person Robinson.
Yes.
Alder Person Robinson is a yes. Alderman Mitchell? Alder Woman Ramirez? Alder Woman Ramirez?
Yes.
Can you speak up, please? We can't hear you, Alder Woman Ramirez.
Yes.
Yes? Alder Woman Ramirez?
That's a yes.
Sad yes. Alder Woman Taylor?
Yes.
Alder Woman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Sigcho Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sigcho Lopez is a yes. Alderman Talia Pharo? Not present. Alder Woman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Yes.
Alder Woman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alder Woman Clay?
Yes.
Alder Woman Clay is a yes. Alder Woman Silverstein?
Nay.
Alder Woman Silverstein is a no? And the voting is now closed. Thank you.
There are 28 yeas, 21 nays. The motion to lay Alderman Lopez's motion on the table has passed. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, boy, to have to follow Alderman Burnett and Alderman Lopez is not a fun thing to do. I'm going to give it a try here. You know, I attended every single one of the hearings that we had on this bond measure. And since getting into office and learning more about how things are publicly financed, I know that TIFs haven't been the most effective tools. And it's really evident that we need something better. So in the course of these hearings, I understood that the teams from both the Department of Housing and DPD went and talked to a whole bunch of organizations, chambers, community organizations and the like, which I think was exactly the right way to go. We need to make sure that we're bringing people along with us on this. I was, however, very disappointed to find that there was only one Asian American organization that was engaged in this conversation. And when I raised this issue, your team immediately responded and organized a meeting, which I was very pleased for and grateful for because I know that took something to get everybody over the weekend to pull that together. And I hope that we're never in that position again because our communities are also ones that need funding. I happen to live in a ward now where we have several TIFs, but I also have several areas that are not TIF eligible that can use the additional funding. So I agree. And my community has called me to go ahead and support this bond initiative, which I will do today despite the fact that I have had all of these concerns about transparency. will do today despite the fact that I have had all of these concerns about transparency. And I'm not going to make another motion to lower the threshold. I think everybody wants to go home soon, guys. So I want to say that it's incumbent upon all of us to do whatever we can to make sure that people in this city have every opportunity, whoever they are, to succeed, and I believe that this funding will do that. I also think, I also think that it's our responsibility... Thank you, sir. I also think that we do have a responsibility as stewards of the finances of this city to make sure that everything is being spent responsibly and above board and that it's done in an equitable manner. And I believe that we've seen here that this council will hold everybody accountable for every penny of this money that's spent. And while this isn't a pilot, we have reporting requirements that are going to be part of this ordinance, and we should be watching at every single step how money is being spent. And if it's not being done in a way that agrees with all of us, we should absolutely come back and demand changes to this ordinance. There's nothing stopping us from doing that. So I'm here to say that I am excited to support this initiative that will bring funding opportunities that have not been available before to parts of this city that have been disinvested or need additional funding. But I also want to call out too, just for the record, money is going back to the taxing bodies, yes. CPS is going to be in really good shape, but the parks will not be. So let's not forget that because all of us use TIF funds to fund park district initiatives. In fact, during the hearings, I called, I requested information about how many projects have been funded by TIFs for park districts over the last five years because we've got projections that tell us that something like $50 million is going to be returned to the taxing body for the park district, but in the last five years, we funded $110 million in projects. So let's not lose track of who's getting more money back through the taxing districts and who's not. And TIFs are not going away, and we're going to continue to use those in the way that makes sense, but this bond gives us a much more equitable way to make sure that things are not geographically restricted and that more people have the opportunities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Today I rise in support of this $1.25 billion affordable housing bond because, put quite simply, housing is a human right. And I know that our city's TIF dollars can work for all of Chicago, not just an affluent flu. This affordable housing bond is a big win for all of our communities and resulted from years of advocacy for tax increment financing reform and equitable redistribution of TIF dollars. Voting yes will result in the Department of Housing to invest 625 million in the construction and preservation of affordable rental homes, the construction and preservation of homeownership or affordable owner occupied housing, and the conservation of single room occupancy housing. So if you want to help homes impacted by flooding on the West Side, if you want to help that senior with a home that's falling apart on the South Side, vote yes today for this bond. Voting yes will result in the Department of Planning and Development allocating 625 million for neighborhood development grants, small business support, middle housing infill, and workforce development. So if you want to provide job opportunities to our youth, if you want to provide job opportunities to every single Chicagoan, vote yes on this bond. Many of us have long advocated for these types of equitable investments because significant public investment is needed to tackle the housing crisis and to provide our fellow Chicagoans with good jobs. I'm excited that after years of advocating for major TIF reform, our city, under the leadership of this mayor, Brandon Johnson, is finally delivering on significant programs that will equitably redistribute TIF dollars, mainly to historically disinvested communities. Housing is a human right, and I want to sincerely thank everyone who worked on this historic legislation, particularly Daniel Hertz, Tim Jeffries, our DOH and DPD commissioners, NECA, and I'm so sorry, NECA, NECA Unwuzurike, and Gabby Nelson in the mayor's office. Kudos for all of your work, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for delivering on your promise to invest in all of Chicago, not just downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Nick Spazaro.
Thank you, Mr. President, very much. So since you mix up, mix up Laspada and Spazaro a lot, with that, enough is enough. I motion to lay this on the table and call for the vote. And I'm not backing down.
All right. Thank you. I don't know if that motion is... Okay, thank you very much.
Calls to the question.
All right. Thank you, Alder Alderman Spazaro. So, so, all right, is your motion to call the question?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. So there's a motion on the floor to call the question. However, we have just two more speakers technically, and that includes the chair. So if the two that are left would be Alder Laspada, and then the close would be Chairwoman Dow, if it's okay with this body, if those are the last two speakers, I can make a promise to that. Okay?
One minute each. That's the only way I'll agree. That's the only way I will agree.
Okay.
We can't have another 20-minute talk.
All right. So I guess at some point, a threshold vote is going to win. All right. So would you be willing to withdraw your motion, though?
Only if they agree to take one minute each.
All right. So there's a, thank you for withdrawing that motion. Our final two speakers, the chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
I'll take the minute. 4:26:17. If you put forward five motions to table, you deserve to give an explanation for that. I didn't do it to be obstructionist. I didn't do it to be disagreeable. I didn't do it to be funny. I did it because I believe in this ordinance. I don't believe in 95% of it. I don't believe in 98% of it. I believe in 100% of this ordinance. Since the time I was in Chicago reading about TIFs, I wanted to see a path forward path to TIFs. I am glad that I came here, that I've lived and served long enough to be a part of that opportunity, and I believe in robust transformative tools, tools that outlive my time in office. I believe in the people who put this together, who have proved their competency, their ability to review and do these grants well, and I believe in the transparency and the mechanisms that we put in place to make sure that this is a strong and effective tool. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm going to be more than one minute.
Take your time, Alder woman. Take your time.
You know, Mr. President, I started my day off today with a ribbon cutting at Park Boulevard. And as I was driving downtown, I was thinking about how historic this ordinance is, that we can finally make some investments in housing and economic development in Chicago. And I know, like many of my colleagues, you have a clear demand going on in your community about wanting to see housing and economic development in your ward. And all of this leads to job creation, as we know. And I was talking to Commissioner Castaneda this morning, and she has more projects that she's thinking about and reviewing than there's money to address. And in the Department of Planning, there's over 140 applications for the bond financing that's just sitting there. So if we don't do anything, we need to pass this ordinance because if we do not pass this ordinance, there is nothing that we're going to be able to do in our respective wards. I want to address a couple of things. You know, I listened to my colleagues, and there were many substantive changes made to this proposal, which I want to remind you is a funding proposal. It is not a program proposal or a policy proposal. It is a funding proposal, and we have made some changes that people wanted. Specifically, we've increased transparency in ways that require quarterly reporting, uh, from twice a year reporting, and we have stipulated that the public portal has data in it with elements, data elements that many of you have already pointed out and wanted to see in that portal. We've increased the oversight of spending by requiring city council oversight over $5 million. And everybody keeps talking about 1 million, 2.5 million. The reality is that what we already approve is an average of 10 to 11 million dollars. That's what we see. We've actually lowered the threshold, which is a compromise, I believe, between 1 and whatever, 51 million, 61 million that Alderman Vasquez was, I mean, Viegas was talking about. 5 million is reasonable. If we were to go to 1 million, we're putting an unnecessary burden on the development process. And we already know that we're existing in a fragile market right now. We don't need to add more red tape to the developers that want to invest in our neighborhoods and invest in our city. To the point about, oh, this is just a blank check, it's not. The ordinance specifically names the types of programs and the spending amounts authorized in each bond. Many are for existing programs that we lament about, that already have oversight models on them, the home repair program, the community development grants, SRO preservation, as someone mentioned earlier. And let's not forget that every project that comes through finance usually has a touch point, an eyesight, oversight in the Housing and Real Estate Committee, or the Zoning Committee, or other committees that we all serve on. I want to say that this ordinance allows us for, to support a greater range of projects. TIFs can support building new grocery stores or other retail in our food deserts, but the bonds can. Bonds help fund affordable housing in already well-established neighborhoods and economic development projects in areas on the North and Northwest Side. We can use bond funds for that. This is not a blank check, and funds cannot be used to support purposes that are not written in the ordinance. Finally, I just want to say that I think that this is a very good compromise that fixes a real immediate problem. We just don't have the money, and we need the resources. And as someone mentioned earlier, if we don't like what we see as we move forward, thank you, Alderman Lee, we have an opportunity to amend and tweak the ordinance. And as long as I'm the finance chair, I have the, you can come to me and we will talk about it. You know I'm fair. Once again, I would like to thank Mayor Johnson for your leadership. We do need this money, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank you for the, you know, for pushing this forward. I want to thank DPD and DOH staff. I want to thank Jill Jaworski, Daniel Hertz, thank you so much, Mr. McDonald from the Law Department, Tim Jeffries from the Planning Department, for working hard on crafting this proposal. And I ask that our colleagues join me today in voting yes for a proposal that's going to do good work in every single neighborhood in the city of Chicago. Thank you.
You're welcome. Chairwoman Dow, on your motion. Chairwoman Dow, on your motion. You move?
Yes, I move that we do a roll call vote on this one.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the passage of this item by a roll call vote. Members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time. Madam Clerk.
Okay. Okay, voting is now open. Voting is now open. Okay, we'll now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alder Person Robinson? Alder Person Robinson is a yes. Alder woman Ramirez?
Yes.
Alder woman Ramirez is a yes. Alder woman Taylor?
Yes.
Alder woman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Sigcho Lopez?
Yeah.
Alderman Sigcho Lopez is a yes. Alderman Talia Pharoa? Not present in chambers. Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez?
Yes.
Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alder woman Clay?
In the voice of Alder Spazaro, Alder woman Clay is a yes.
Alder woman Clay is a yes. And Alder woman Silverstein?
No.
Alder woman Silverstein is a no. Voting is now closed.
Thank you. There are 32 yays, there are 17 nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider the vote?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. This motion fails. Thank you. Miscellaneous business. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Except for the ordinance set in the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Very much. All right, for the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Clerk, could you please read that ordinance?
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago. Section 1, "The next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, May 22, 2024, beginning at 10 o'clock a.m. in the council chamber in the 2nd floor of City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage."
Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well, here, no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to adjourn. Wait, I'm sorry. Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. On your motion to move for passage of the date and time of the next meeting, my apologies. Thought he did that.
Oh, I move passage.
Oh, yes. All right, there's a motion in the omnibus for the date and time of the next meeting. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Now for the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
Okay, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And then, of course, on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Wait, hold on a second. What now?
Again? Shit, I'm tired, man. I broke fast late. Tired, hungry. Yeah. I'm on the work.
We're fine. On the motion to adjourn, Alderman Mitchell. On the motion to adjourn, Alderman Mitchell. To adjourn.
There's no further business before this body. I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Meeting's adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.